We'll call the Stevens Point area Public School District Regular School Board Meeting for Monday, December 9th, 2013 to order. Roll call and verification of quorum, please.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
Ms. Faxon.
Here.
Mr. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Presley.
Here.
Mr. Rothman.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Shively.
Excused.
Yeah, she's on there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't know.
See if she's on there yet.
Renee, are you there?
Chris, it's right in front of you. Oh.
I didn't even know that was there.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you.
Ms. Sherrick.
Here.
Ms. Totten.
Here.
All right, moving on to item three, the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Larson.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Shively.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Mr. Rothman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have students from Jefferson Elementary. Come on in, folks. Whenever you're ready.
(audience) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Well, I'm hoping we have certificates for each one of you. I know that we got some home calls late, so we hope that's the case. So, we're gonna have you spread out just a little bit, be shoulder to shoulder. There we go. Big people in the back. There we go. So, Mrs. Scott, who's been a long time board member, is gonna hand these out. Zoe Fink.
Zoe, congratulations.
Stacey Yacine.
Stacey, what's about to remember all these things?
Amelia Johnson.
Amelia.
Anna Clark.
What are these names?
Isa Mahan.
Isa.
Madeline Wertz Olsen.
Madeline.
Alexis Durkey. And Alita Richards. Did we get everybody?
Everyone.
Okay, good. Now, we're gonna turn those around and hold them up, and we're gonna have a picture taken by Mrs. O'Donnell, so we're gonna have to squeeze everybody in, Sarah.
You have to squeeze a little bit of them.
Okay, I'm standing back here, so squeeze in.
I can't squeeze the other.
Okay. There we go.
There we go, that's better.
Wonderful. Okay, so now what we're gonna do is have you introduce your folks, and if your folks aren't here, just tell us their names, and we'll start at the end over there with Alita.
My mom is named Jeannie Hill.
And where is she?
Right there.
Okay, welcome. All right.
Um, my dad is Scott.
You're welcome, Scott.
My dad is Cole.
Hi, Cole.
Yeah.
Okay, over here.
My mom is Caroline.
Caroline.
My dad is Brad.
Brad, there he is, back there. Okay.
My mom is Carrie.
Where's Carrie? Carrie, there you go.
My dad is Michael, and he's not here.
He's not here tonight, okay? And one more, I think.
My mom is Lisa.
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 Welcome all. Let's give these a fine tour. Okay, so I'll have you to go around and meet the board members, okay? There we go.
I don't want to stop.
Just right here, and you can start right here, and just shake hands. Make sure it's a firm one.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you guys. Awesome job. Nice coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody's got their boots on.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Nice job. You've done a good, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a nice firm handshake.
Community service, no?
No. Students, staff. Donations, I got.
All right. Moving on. Item five, we have no community service recognition tonight, or student-staff-parent community recognition, but we do have donations.
The Stevens Point Public Area School District generously accepts the following: $1,000 from Palito's Pizza to be used for the special sports program; $80 from Bill Cook Chapter of the Isaac Walton League of America donated to the libraries to purchase books on the environment; $25 from Gloria Zahn in memory of Bob Schultz for the music department; two 20-inch bicycles from Dave Sushon, Dave's Body Shop; and nine boys' and girls' winter coats from an anonymous donor. Very generous at this time of year, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. We have a few speakers tonight, so we'll increase the time limit to five minutes. Our Policy 180 regarding public comments is printed on the agenda, and we respectfully ask that they be followed. Our speakers under public comments tonight in the order they signed up: Albert Rockow, Reed Rocheloo, and Glenn Rindell. So, Albert, it's all yours.
Thank you. I'm Albert Rockow, 1824 Gilkey Street in Stevens Point, immediate past president of the Stevens Point Area Retired Teachers Association. I thank the Board of Education for observing American Education Week this year by renting a billboard. The National Education Association, NEA, and the American Legion met in 1919 to seek ways to generate support for public education. At the 1921 NEA Convention in Moonee, Iowa, representatives voted for an observance. The first American Education Week was observed on December 4th to 10th, 1921, and has been observed ever since. In this school district, it was done a number of ways. In the 1990s, the district bought rolls, donuts, and bagels for each staff member. The superintendent invited the Stevens Point Area Retired Teachers Association, SPARDA, to pick up the items at a local store and take them to the several buildings. We accepted the offer and arranged for two of us per building to deliver them to those buildings. The kitchen staff prepared coffee and tea, and milk. A number of times, the superintendent wrote a letter to the editor commending district employees. At times, the president of the school board wrote a letter. Occasionally, other board members did so. After the district stopped purchasing food items, it published a display ad in color with an apple theme. SPARDA complimented that effort with a similar display ad. The last few years, SPARDA members submitted two letters to the editor commending the district staff. We continue to contribute to the threads of hope to help the homeless children of the district. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Merry Christmas to you, Albert. Thank you. Reed, you're next.
Hey, Reed Rocheloo, waiting. Last meeting, I believe it was Bob Larson, if I'm wrong, please correct me, suggested that the sheriff and local law enforcement should handle all cadet recognition, not the school. At the same meeting, Mr. Presley brought up the argument that if the sheriff does outline schools, and if the city does city schools, which they don't, and he was aware of that, he didn't say that, but they don't do it, it would be double taxation. Mr. Presley's sheriff's argument is valid but not appropriate to student cadet program, however it would be to, maybe we should have countywide law enforcement. Mr. Larson's argument isn't valid, and I'll tell you why. I don't think this school has ever been told just what the cadets do. And I went to see the sheriff, Mr. Lucas, who came here. Here are some of the programs. Again, he will be offering many of these programs for your classrooms. Dear school staff, I don't know if you ever got this, but anyways, stranger awareness, latchkey program, fingerprinting, 9-1 emergency phone calls, drug-free programs, poison awareness, ADD Eagle gun safety, Code React drills, internet safety, bicycle safety, seatbelt safety, sexual assault awareness, vandalism, shoplifting, driver education safety, alcohol and drug laws and consequences, Sheriff's Department tours, safety cadet training, counteract, bus riding, evacuation, safety. You know, they do a lot more. I think some people are under the belief that these cadets only help crossing guards across the street. They do a lot of stuff in the schools, all school-related. We should be happy the sheriff does this and helps out, not making them pay for it, you know? And it really, and we just aren't getting the right information, and, you know, this should be brought out. You know, what does the track team do to help in the schools? Yet, Mr. Winiger's giving them big rewards. You know, it's a good program. You know, how about that world champion weightlifter? That's really phenomenal. I don't even know what that had to do with the schools. Was that done through the school program? But that really showcased. And what do our cadets get from Mr. Winiger? He canceled the program last year because he wouldn't let them take it out of school. Yet, he can give his staff, last year, he got caught last year, give them a whole day off on Thanksgiving. There's hundreds of people, that was thousands of dollars. And how about his ex-secretary? Give him a nice gift. You know, we gotta understand the program, what they all do, and the school's gotta step up and do something to recognize 450 kids. The other thing is, these meetings, these meetings, even in the Portage County Gazette, what do you get for a dollar? They write in there. They run until 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock in the morning. That's the regular meeting. Then you gotta go into closed session. This is bizarre, it's ridiculous, it shouldn't happen. And, you know, board members are forced to make important decisions at extremely late hours. You shouldn't do it. I see board members falling asleep here. Renee, Shively's at home now, hope you're recovering, Renee. You know, she was actually falling asleep here one time, but other people are... But Mr. Winiger was smiling here last week later in the day. You know, some people function well, and they're nocturnal. I believe most of you are diurnal. You know, ISICS suggest to you that you shut the meetings off at 10 o'clock. Yep, that's the fart, longest you can go. After 10 o'clock, whatever you didn't finish, you go to the following week. That will prevent board manipulation of the agenda to have matters heard way at the end and give certain people way in the beginning. Last week, you had teachers here waiting for the 5-1 program till 1 o'clock in the morning. They have to teach. There's an incentive, and then maybe we wouldn't have all of these recognition programs. We could do it, you know, in some other manner. They wouldn't run for 40 minutes, half an hour. Mr. Winiger would like to do it for an hour. So, I think you should put that on the agenda, one of your future agendas. There are ways that you could, you know, additionally, this might be a way of, you know, getting people. Who wants to run for the school board when you know you're gonna have to go to 2 o'clock in the morning? And you've been consistently running after midnight. I think tonight could be short, but, you know, I don't know. But please, do something here. You can't be making major decisions after 10, and our student advisor or representative, they shouldn't be required. I say her, she's gotta go to school the next day, and you have to work, some of you. This is just, there are ways that we could do that, and I think the 10 o'clock and the following week, so. And the following week, you've done that before, had meetings.
Glenn?
Glenn Rindell, 1024 Brawley Street, Stevens Point. Just bringing forth, oddly enough, similar issues with the concerns about the board with Mr. Rocheloo. Specifically talking about in dealing with the board, I think you've done a lot of work in saying, okay, we gotta work on whatever the term for dysfunction that you want to use moving forward. But I'd ask you to stop and reflect and say, there have been some casualties. There has been some casualties along the way. And case in point, what you're bringing up tonight, the Jackson Expeditionary School. If you watched that meeting and you knew nothing about it, or nothing about the throw-through, it's like you would think that it was put in front of you with no information, whatever. And the concern is that when you're bringing something forward, you've got community members stepping forward who've put a lot of hours and a lot of effort and a lot of ideas into something that they think is very valuable, even having fellow school board members moving forward on the board looking at it. And then when it comes to the board, and you're like, well, wait a minute, you never told us it was gonna open Jackson. You never told us it was gonna cost this amount. You never said this, you never said this. It looked like a board unprepared. And I said, there's a reason for the fact that you weren't unprepared, and I feel like that's what you're dealing with. If it's something that's important, you'll get everything. And I'm not saying the board's unprepared, but I don't think you had all the information. I think I had access to all of you had, and there was a lot of things that surprised me. And the Expeditionary School is a casualty of this idea that when the superintendent wants something, he'll give you everything ahead of time versus piecemeal it out versus saying, oh, here, this is what we're looking at. And it's not fair. It doesn't take six months to change a school. On behalf of every SPAS teacher, we say thank you very much. You fought everything that the superintendent did, and you did something that educationally is gonna be very powerful, especially using RTI and PBIS, working with our students. That's good stuff, but you had to fight it. And the thing that we're talking about is big decisions are being made, as was mentioned before, at 11 and 12 o'clock at night. Now, if we have issues about not getting enough people in this room, and issues democracy saying, hey, we got 200 people, they're not gonna fit in the room, they can watch a video in there. Okay, no, they're not quite gonna fit. If we have issues with that, don't we have issues of saying, we're making decisions that affect the whole school district at midnight? And if you're not willing to stay up, if you're not willing to put in long hours, you're not gonna get the information direct. I know it's shown on cable access TV, but you know we live in a society where people are saying, we want the information now. So, I ask if we're gonna move forward, I mean, there's reasons. There's reasons why. Ms. Sherrick continually says, why are you putting this on there? That's not my name to it. I just brought it up. Or Ms. Totten says, I want this information. Why don't we have the information in front of us? Or Mr. Larson, you're like, well, you didn't have the money here. We don't know what the money is. We don't know what the money is. Okay? And Mr. Presley, I mean, nobody wants to line item the budget, but you're saying there's a reason for it. There's a reason for it. There's reasons why you ask for those things. There's a reason why Ms. Ebel say, I don't have enough information here, I don't know what's going on. And what you're trying to do is you're trying to extend the board meeting to make things work when they're not working. And the reason why, in many cases, is the interaction of a group for and against what they believe is the true intent of the superintendent. And that's really tough. That's really tough. You're all asking to be given a piece of something that's not gonna work well, and you spend all your time looking at board policy and minutes and comments and all these things because you're saying, we have to adjust to way the superintendent does something. And I hope you understand that sends a powerful message to the community that you have to adjust, and you have to adjust based upon what's going on with the head of our schools. And I hope moving forward, there aren't as many casualties. The Life Skills Center did not have to take as long, did not have to be as acrimonious. Five and one. Whether you've got, whatever you decide in the Jackson School, they should've gotten a fair shake with all the information out in front of them ahead of time. I ask you moving forward, to make your decisions based upon the way things should be, and keep fighting for what's right in education. Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, Student Senate Report. Ashley.
There are a lot of holiday concerts coming up. The choir concert is tomorrow night at 7:30. The orchestra concert is Thursday, the 12th, at 7:30, and the band concert will be next Tuesday at 7:30, all of which they would like to invite the board to. This Friday, the 13th, there will be a home doubleheader versus Marshfield for basketball. Girls will start at 6:00 PM, and boys will start at 7:45. And last week, Friday, the debate team went to a competition and went to the semifinals, so that's top four out of 22 schools, so a pretty amazing honor. And we had one student take sixth on a rare mention, so that was what happened.
All right. Thanks, Ashley. 7B Board Comments. Angel?
Pass, please.
All right. Lisa?
Yes. Over the past few years, our district has begun a number of studies to determine the best long-range direction for this district. My understanding is we are in the process of compiling this data collectively as I speak. With this in mind, I'm having a hard time understanding how this board continues to approve projects that may very well go against what ultimately is determined as our endgame. Was there really a purpose in doing the studies, or were the studies established to insinuate we cared about doing our due diligence when in fact we do not? We have cut and limited programs in an interest to balance our budget with direct negative impacts upon our students, all while also approving major projects, including the Life Skills Center, the Plover Whiting Expansion sprinkler system, and the electrical energy updates. These projects have an economic impact much larger than the savings we realize from the cuts imposed upon our students. So, I ask, if we have no money for the programs we had to cut, how do we have funds available for these major projects? I understand that the Life Skills Center is partly being funded by funds returned to the district, but why weren't those funds used for operations instead? While it is allowable to use these funds for this project, it is not mandatory. The board was originally told this project was going to be funded by grants, which to date has only amounted to approximately $12,000. How are we going to fund the annual operations of this building? Remember, whatever the government does not reimburse us for under Fund 27, the General Fund 10 must make up the difference. This will lead us to have an additional shortfall for our Fund 10 operations. I also understand that the electrical energy updates are going to be funded by exceeding our revenue limit caps, which is allowed by law, but should we really be doing this without our studies being compiled and results evaluated? Just because we can do something does not necessarily mean we should. I also understand the Plover Whiting mezzanine needed to be addressed, but again, I am not convinced it was done appropriately. One minute we are told the sprinkler option is not viable, and the next, it is proposed so we can utilize the space. We, as a board, need to be better stewards of our taxpayers' funds. I cannot imagine what my personal finances would look like if I continued to react just as this board has repeatedly. I have both a managerial accounting and business administration degree and understand fiscal responsibility, but I wonder if our administration does. We are not here to fill their wish lists, but rather to ensure the needs of all our students are met. I sincerely hope this board takes its time before it considers approving the Jackson Charter School proposal. I urge the board to wait until we have received the completed collective data and think about the big picture and what's best for the district as a whole.
Kim?
I'm sure mine's not gonna come out as clear as that is, but... Basically, I wanted to respond to the article in the Portage County Gazette. I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Kimmeter's observation. I have noticed him sitting in the audience the last few months, and even sometimes to the wee hours of the morning. And if anybody wants to read the article, it's in the December 6th Gazette, and basically the heading is, "The Heart of Schools' Dysfunction May Rest with the Superintendent." And one point in hand is we met with Dale Feinhauer, I think that's how you pronounce his name, to work on the board's dysfunction on November 18th. When I left that evening, I believe the board took one step forward. However, less than 24 hours later, we took five steps back during attempt of a closed session. We had a board member turn on his word, he had agreed to a closed session for a specific topic, and in the beginning of the meeting, said he didn't understand what the purpose was. So, the closed session didn't even get past the agenda approval regarding the discussion on the superintendent's evaluation and conduct. Another thing that was brought to my attention is that we also have the administration that is supposed to help our staff with their recertification with the WERC. They're supposed to assist our staff with postings on this to all staff members. There are a few paper postings taped on bathroom doors in some, but not all, schools. But why isn't our administration willing to send a group email to all staff like they do regularly? Since our superintendent is so hung up on technology, this should be the first and only attempt. By the way, this is state mandated that our administration helps, and I have learned that an absent vote is a no vote, and it comes, when it comes to the recertification. And that makes me believe that our, that's what our administration is banking on. Co-board members want the, wants the community to think, excuse me, co-board members want the community to think our dysfunction is due to a few or certain board members, and I do agree. It's the board members that don't ask the hard questions. They're the bobbleheads who approve projects without dollar amounts on contracts, and sometimes not even a contract. If you think you can help the board with its dysfunction, or get rid of this dysfunction, your paperwork for to run for school board needs to be completed by January 7th. We have four seats available for this election, and so far, three candidates have completed their paperwork. So, come and join the fun. Thank you.
Chris?
I just wanted to thank Ashley for being our student rep. Not too long ago, we didn't have a student rep at board meetings. It's been a great addition to have a student rep. Ashley, I think you've done a fine job. You asked some really good questions. There isn't anything more important than to get student input and have questions. Recently, I ran into a former student rep, and Tom Mitchell, who's been all over traveling, and we talked for a while about what it meant to him to gain that knowledge, to be part of a process. And so, I just wanted to thank you, Ashley. These are somewhat difficult times. This last year has been pretty much, I would say, difficult in a lot of different areas. I think it's really sad to see people looking for blame instead of solutions, people working together, because I've seen that a lot. I see it in our schools, I see it with our staff, I see it with students in a lot of the areas, and it's really, it really saddens me. I've been very, very proud to be a part of this district for a long time, and, you know, pitching blame at people, it doesn't help us. I think there have been a number of times that, over the years in history, we look at what's happened in our country, and one of the things that we've talked about is the power to unite is much greater than the power to divide. So, I hope we'll all keep that in mind, because it's really important to everyone in our community, but mainly, I just wanted to say thank you. I know you've been here a lot of times, and it's been really late, and I think we're all very passionate about getting this job done and doing it right, so sometimes it's messy, and it takes a long time so that people are comfortable, because we have nine people who don't always agree and don't have the same experience. But thank you very much. I certainly appreciate it, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. As you heard earlier, Renee is home recovering, so we do not have a WASB legislative update, nor do we have a superintendent's report tonight. So, moving on to the consent agenda, we have three items. We have the minutes from our November 25th meeting, the approval of monthly bills for the weeks ending November 8th, 2013, through November 22nd, 2013, in the amount of $1,563,944.8. And lastly, a revised, at your places, a revised 2013-14 Personnel Recommendations. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Barb, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Larson.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Shively.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yeah, I'm just finishing reading the information we just received. Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Mr. Rothman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Moving on to item nine. Bella Franzen, you signed up for nine. We have 9A through E. Is there a particular one you wish to speak to, or just in general?[1717.33]
Nine B.
Nine B? All right, let us take nine A first, and then you can follow Reed Rocheloo on nine B. All right, starting with nine A, Business Services Review of Financial Statements for Information Only. Bill?
These statements are through October. The last, I just got the last bank statement today for November, so those aren't done, but I have reconciled all balance sheet accounts, the major revenues, which is your, any taxes, state aids, through at that point. If you have any questions?
Questions for Bill? Anything in the financials? All right.
I have a question. It's not really to do with this. Is it weird to be up there so early in the meeting?
I don't know what to do.
I figured you were a little jittery there, so, no, thank you.
All right, we have two speakers on nine B, which is the approval of the contract between the district and the Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning. So we'll take them in the order they signed up. Reed, you're up first, and then Bella, you'll be second.
Lisa Totten, I think you had a good idea. This thing's got to be postponed, and I think Mr. Jake Glenn Waindell brings up some interesting points, too, speaking about this. You know, we're not getting the facts, the figures, you know, I told you whether it's good or bad, and I come on all meetings, and I mentioned that one meeting, I said, like, where did this all come about? All of a sudden, they're here with a Jackson School proposal in front of you. And I'm like, what? You know, so I go back, see, and I go back, and I pick up the March 11th, 213 packet, when this meeting, this thing came, okay? This was the night that you guys voted to apply for the grant to look into doing this project, not do it. Just, okay. And here it says the background. This is from Mary Jo Elekner and Connie Nigard. Information regarding Expeditionary Learning School Planning Grant was presented to the Student Achievement Committee on February 6th and March 6th. That's why I never heard about it. It never came to the full board. It came to Jen Zock's committee. It's like they're giving this report to themselves. You know, and then the Charter School plan has expanded to include partnership, both in the community and the university point. And you've got to read all of these data. I hope that you guys have, because this is really big, and I have. I've read it back and forth, and I compared the one you got last week, which was the grant application. Now, if you read what was in the grant application and what the state was requiring and how they answered it, it's, you know, it's really troubling. And throughout the state, when they were asking, where do you have community support? That's what they wanted, the community involvement. There was none, very little. Their idea of a community member was Mr. Rothman, who then becomes a school board member. Two school board members appeared, were on that committee, that planning committee, and throughout these documentations have committed themselves to this project. That's a conflict of interest. We're supposed to be here tonight discussing it, and these people, Rothman, and unfortunately, Renee, was on that committee, and have committed themselves through this documentation. So I hope they read it, because whoever wrote that document committed you to this project. And that's not, that's a conflict. I know I brought that up with Bob, and he said he's going to bring it up to the administration. He probably brought it up with Mr. Winter, and he got the attorney that's supposed to represent you, and they probably told you, well, it's not a financial conflict. How about this one, guys? It may not be a financial contact, but it's bigger than that. It's a moral and ethical political conflict, is when you're committed as board members. In one spot, you shouldn't be now deciding to go ahead and do it, because you committed your vote, okay? And you people, and Renee and Rothman, didn't have to be on this committee. There was nowhere where it asked even for Connie Nigard to be on this committee. None of these people had to be on this committee, and these two school board members shouldn't have. But they have, and they should recuse themselves, and if they don't, you ought to request it, okay? Because if you read this documentation and really read it, and all of the questions, and in order for this thing to work, they, including Connie Nigard, doesn't make any sense. Your schools have to be in terrible shape. Our schools are so bad. And then they bring up, we have no alternative to like similar to grade realignment. We don't have, well, that's what's going to happen in a couple of weeks. So they're rushing it so they can make the argument, we don't have that. We don't have a situation where we can teach these kids in a different environment. How many places do you need to teach these kind of kids? You got Fernandez Center. Now, you want to do that, you know, for these kids? What about the general student population? This seems like a yuppie program. Let the yuppies pay for it. I don't want to, and I don't think the public, when they knew that you're not spending money on your schools and then you're bad-mouthing the way we're teaching and saying it ain't working, well, make it work. Don't run out there and have some yuppie school, and then, oh, we're going to get that 6,000 per student from these homes. If they want, if these kids want to stay at home, let them stay there. We don't need kids with problems in our schools. We got enough problems, okay? Let's take this to the public, and I can't think of a better time than right now, when we have an election coming up. And there's the opportunity to get real community involvement, and when the public knows what's really happening here, and how you're trying to open up Jackson School.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Bella, you're next.
Hello, and my apologies, I need to work on writing my Cs better.
Not a problem.
It's Becca Franzen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right.
Well, it could be a C, could be, you know, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's true, right?
Right? Good. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I just have a few brief comments related to the Expeditionary Learning Charter School. And it's interesting, because when I think about learning and education, I think about it from the student's perspective, and there are so many different kinds of students that come to the plate, and it's students from all backgrounds, all different kinds of parents, and thinking about the comments from the gentleman just before me, all different interests. They learn in different ways, and the Expeditionary Learning Charter School would provide another avenue for students to learn. I'm speaking as a parent in the district with two young children, that this would provide an alternative opportunity for them. I think about my many friends who have enrolled recently, their own children, in a different charter school nearby is another opportunity, another choice in how their students learn and the success that they're seeing in their own kids. I also think about the students that I work with as an assistant professor of environmental education at UW Stevens Point. The students that I work with that are pre-service teachers and interested in working in, again, a variety of opportunities. I work with students who are minoring in environmental education, and I see that this could be a possibility for them to have an alternative student teaching opportunity and experience there. I really appreciate that you're taking the time to look at this and consider it. Besides from the learner's perspective, there's also research out there that supports this and that it can really have an impact on student learning and understanding, and hopefully later on their involvement in the great things that you have chosen to do in supporting their community. So thank you very much for your time, and good luck to you.
Becca, thank you. Connie, Mia, I know you've got a group with you, Jen. The podium is yours.
So we have several members of the Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning Governing Board here, including, and I introduced them last week, but I'll do it again, Chris Munson from UWSP, Jeremy Solan from UWSP, Mia, our school designer from Expeditionary Learning, Jen Zock, parent and former board member, and Alan Martin. So on November 25th, we were here and had lengthy discussion and conversation and good questions about the charter school proposal and what we have done and where we're at. And at that time, we were asking for you to approve the contract between Jackson School, Jackson Expeditionary School for, or Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning and the board. And there were quite a few questions. That was the next step in the process for the planning grant, which we received, and it comes in two phases. And the second phase is, comes to the district, that money comes to the district when a contract is approved. So there were quite a few questions at the last meeting, and we put together a memo that I hope addressed many of those questions, but really came down to, understandably, funding as a major issue for the charter school, as well as a couple other issues. And Tom Owens is going to be here, and he's here to address some of the options that he really helped a lot with in terms of the funding questions. In terms of the accountability and autonomy, there were questions about, does a charter school kind of stand alone on its own? And we talked about it being an instrumentality of the school district, and there was a handout in your packet that I hoped further explained the relationship between the school district and the charter. There are some charters that are very much standalone and very independent from a school district, and we have not proposed that. In fact, when we're, that contract that we have in front of you is mainly a contract for you to allow a staff, and as doing such, should we have staffing from the school board? That whole process of hiring staff would all fall under the human resource personnel guidelines that current staff do. So the district would not be out doing something different than all personnel are required and expected to do as a part of this school district. In addition, there was a handout that talked about the charter school expenditures and how specifically charter school money comes into a district and how it can be expended. And that was very, very specific, and I just wanted that to be in your packet so that should this go forward, and should grant monies come in, you can see really clearly on how the governance board just can't do whatever they want with those funds. Namely, charter school monies are provided to provide those kinds of curriculum materials and expenditures needed should you be adopting a different kind of experience, which is what this is about. So lots of support for new materials, curriculum materials, equipment, one-time costs to open up a school, and that was, I thought that handout really outlined it pretty well on how grant money can be funded, or grant money can be expended. And then finally, there were some really good questions about what the future of the charter school money is. And at this time, the state of Wisconsin has requested an extension for their charter school monies such that charter schools like JMSL, should it go forward, would get 85% of the implementation grant. And so the numbers that were in your document are 85% of that original 225 that we would have received. So I think there were some questions, like, will that money be there? Should this go forward next year? And the question, and the answer right now is almost positively yes, that the state is going to receive that extension. Then the state applies for federal, another cycle of federal money, which would then provide funding for future charter school money. But again, all of that is information that, that would be money that would come in, but can't come in and wouldn't come in, of course, until a contract is decided. The main question, I think, and lots of comments about, and understandably so, as well as time and time needed, so I'm going to, at this time, have Tom go through some of the funding options, and Jen Zock has a few comments, and we'll talk about exactly tonight what we're asking you to approve, which is a little bit different than it was in November 25th. So, Tom.
Good evening. They've asked me to touch on the options that were developed for funding. There basically are four, and just in summary, they go from providing, if this is, these are options of your choice, of course, whichever option you choose, if any. One would be to begin the charter school at the beginning of the school year and fund it from, fund balance is a possibility in the first year. That budget estimate was $981,000. The second one is to delay the implementation until second semester, thus reducing that cost to approximately half because of the first year, because we're delaying, obviously, by half a year. The third option is to wait an entire year and begin the first semester of 2015-16. And of course, that puts the district outside of the ability to get any continued grants from the state, essentially eliminates that. The previous two options did not. And the fourth option is to not to approve the contract and stop the process, of course, is your option. In the first option, and it flows through several of the other options, we have an opportunity, if this moves forward, to bring in students who are currently homeschooled. If that happens, it actually creates new revenue for the district in the form of the revenue limit, because these would be new students to the district. So that is actually an enrollment increase in the overall district, and that provides additional funds for the budget to sustain this. Whether or not we would get any, of course, I have no idea, or how many we would get. To the degree to which the Jackson School would share that facility with other programs allows some cost savings or cost sharing, and that could be advantageous. The ability of the district to achieve additional grants through the meta software that we have and grant work is another possibility for fundraising, and of course, the DPI grants are still available to us with this first option. In the, in the terms of sustaining, if the first option were chosen, then the question comes up down the road, how do we continue to sustain it? And we're facing a particular fork in the road. If I could kind of describe it this way, we have initially one fork in the road. Do we move forward or don't we? It's a yes or no answer. If the answer's no, well, then everything else is moot. We just don't go forward, and everybody forgets it. If we do go forward, then the next question is, how do we go forward and how do we fund it? And so then we reach another fork in the road. Do we fund this out of current budget, or do we look to fund it by some other means than that? Say, for example, referendum, et cetera? When we get into option two, all of those same questions still exist. We reduce the impact in year one, because we are starting half a year into it, so our initial cost or impact to the fund balance course is reduced, but we're still facing the question of sustainment. How do we sustain this in the long term? And we reach that fork in the road down the line in our decision-making, is do we do that out of operating funds? And if we have to do that, then what, if anything, is eliminated to make room for that? And then the other fork in the road is if we fund it by some other means, from new revenue, for example, then that sustainment question is answered in that realm. Option three is to wait until the first semester of 2015-16, and that essentially puts us out to a point at which, if you were to go to referendum, you would know the answer to. Let me kind of set this up for you. You've got, in the spring, we're going to have to be looking at the question of the meta-analysis of all of the previous studies. You've got the facility study, you've got the grade level configuration study, you've got the graduation, et cetera, all of those studies. When the overall group, whoever you choose to do this, looks at all of those studies and comes back with a recommendation. If that recommendation, and I say if, because I don't know what they're going to do, but if that recommendation is to suggest to you that we need to put some additions on some schools, we need to rearrange the grade alignments, et cetera, however that looks, it would undoubtedly result in the need for referendum, because there's clearly no money in the budget to do that type of thing in the absence of a referendum. Well, along with a referendum for, let's call it bricks and mortar, because that's what it is, building additions, the state requires us to have two questions separated because of revenue limits. One is bricks and mortar. The second question is a question of operating funds. To operate the facilities and the expansion that would have been, is in the referendum question for bricks and mortar. So there, even though there are two separate referendum questions, they're dependent on one another. It would not do you much good to pass one without also passing the other. In the case of the bricks and mortars, if you were not to pass that, but you were to pass the operating revenue, you wouldn't have buildings to use that for, so it makes no sense. So you need to pass both of them as if they were all one question in reality. That would be an opportunity as well to include the funding for this school in that question as well. So the voters then would be deciding the outcome of the funding for the school. Now, that funding could come as early, probably, as February of 2015, because you have to realize that for the recommendation to come to you would probably be late spring, maybe, I don't know, April, May. You would then have to decide if you wanted to go forward with a referendum. Should that be your decision, they would then have to pass a resolution to that effect. There'd have to be time to develop that resolution, determine the wording, the scope exactly so it represented what you wanted to do, what your recommendation to the public is. You cannot really run a campaign in the summer, everybody's gone and people are doing other things, so you would have to, in the fall and winter, do your educational promotion to inform the public of what that question is about and what you're going to put to inform the public of what that question is about and what you're going to put before them. That's in the end of 2014. So, the first opportunity you have to bring this question before the public for a vote would be the February elections in 2015. Now, if you look at the recommendations here, starting school at the start of 2014-15, you would know the answer in February of 2015 as to whether or not the voting public would sustain that down the road. With option two, you would also know that, but you would not be so far into the process financially as you would if you waited till the second semester. Those first two would allow you to maintain the DPI grants. If you went to option three, that's the most secure in the sense that you've not taken any risk in terms of committing funds to the project until you know whether or not the public supports this. And then, of course, option four is you just decide now you don't want to do it, so again, that ended the series. But in options one, two, and three, you have the possibility of a referendum where the public would make the decision whether or not you continue forward, or you have the option of yourself making that decision and then deciding how to fund that out of the operating budget in the absence of a referendum. So, really, before the group can move forward in determining what to do in terms of when to open a school and how to fund it, the board, it's reliant on the board to make a decision of what it wants to do with this from a financial sense. And those are kind of the four outlines of approaches or options that we see that are before us with a couple of variations in that you might go a path of referendum, you might go a path of not referendum. Or the referendum, you could go a path and it would fail if it doesn't pass, and then you've got another decision about, well, you wanted to go forward, but if the referendum failed, now what are you going to do? So, those are the possibilities that are before us.
Tom, just a minor point. On option number three, it states, delay the opening of JMSL until second semester of the 15-16 school year. That should be the first semester, so if board members want to make those changes, that change.
Jen was going to mention that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, not a problem. It was a little typo there, so.
Thanks, Tom. Jen, are you?
Can I ask him a question while he's up there? You mentioned that children that are homeschooled, we would get revenue from them. Do we not get revenue from them now?
We do not. I'm speaking of counting them as a student in our school district? Homeschooled kids are not counted in third Friday or second Friday counts?
But we do get taxpayers' money because they're a student in our district. They could be a student in our district.
Their parents pay taxes like all citizens do, but we do not receive state aid, nor do we have account, we do not count those students with our other students for purposes of the revenue limit. So, they are not students of ours from that sense financially. If they come into our school as a result of this, then they would be our students.
If we have a student in our district, but they choose to go to a different district, we have money coming in from that, correct?
Yes, that's open enrollment.
Open enrollment. So, we have a percentage of that and a little percentage then we lose because they're not actually in our school.
Correct.
Okay, so you're saying a student in our area that chooses to be homeschooled?
Yes.
We don't get any benefit from them being in our district, other than their parents possibly paying taxpayers?
Correct, they're not included in any of our enrollment counts.
Now, I have to do a little bit more research, because I've heard differently, so, but okay, thank you.
Well.
Again, I'm not going to, I've just heard differently, so I will do a little bit more research before I come back with it.
Okay.
Tom, what is the, in terms of the open enrollment, what are the percentages if a student open enrolls out of our district? How much do we still receive, and then how much does the receiving?
Well, it's approximately 3,000, 6,000 combination. So, when we lose a student, we get about 9,9100 for that student, and then 6,6100 we have to pay out to the district that gets them. I think it's $6,194 is the.
So, if an open enrolled student came back to our district, we would receive those funds?
We would keep the 6,000.
Keep the 6,000.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Jeff?
What's the perceived number of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students that are homeschooled within our district?
We have approximately 197 students that are homeschooled this time, and of those students, there's specifically in grades six, seven, and eight, I don't have my numbers in front of me, but I'm pretty close here, 58 students that are specifically grades six, seven, and eight, but there's a number of students that DPI, they label ungraded. In other words, the homeschooling that they're doing, the parents haven't said this is grade six or grade seven.
What was that, what were those two numbers again, Connie? What's the total?
197.
197 students.
And the?
Specifically in grades six, seven, and eight, 58, but others that are ungraded.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's hard to know if that's fifth grade or ninth grade.
Right.
Tom and Bill, do we have any idea of how many open enrolled students we have that are going to other districts in grades six, seven, and eight?
Sure, we can look that up. I don't have it on me, or I don't know the number. We made a report, it's online, right online on our website. I think it's by class, isn't it, by grade? I'm thinking of that little sheet with all the small numbers.
See, we have a sheet.
Yeah, it's very hard to read, so you've got to blow it up, but it's out there by grade, yeah.
Could I give my viewpoints, or?
We're not, well, we aren't to the discussion phase yet.
All right, and I'll wait.
Would you mind?
Well, I got one question for them, then. In year one, you received $225,000 for your planning grant, and I noticed you've got allocated for substitute teachers and travel for professional development, $192,556. You want to explain why you've got so much money allocated for travel?
For travel and professional development is in there too, Bob?
Yeah, what's, I'm just reading what you guys have on there. For substitute teachers and travel for professional development, legal consultation, and expeditionary learning consultation. That left you $32,000 and change for whatever else you're going to do for that.
One of our plan was, our plan was, there will be a lead teacher at this school, and so schools that undergo this kind of a model, the second semester, the huge chunk of money would be for a substitute teacher. In other words, you would release a lead teacher from his or her responsibilities second semester to do all the stuff that you need to do to open a school, because there's not an administrator in the cost, staffing costs. So, that's a big part of that money. Professional development is paying for expeditionary learning school design teams to help us, some travel to visit other schools, but a huge chunk of money would be, we have a lead teacher second semester released from his or her duties, and then that money would cover a teacher to cover that classroom, classrooms, whatever that person's responsibilities are for second semester. Releasing a lead teacher full-time to plan the opening of a school.
Well, here we are again, asking for your support for Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning, and I thank you for your time. And I know you've heard from a couple of our Governance Board members via letters, and so you can hear that in the enthusiasm for this school runs deep within the Governance Board as well as the Advisory Board who have been working on it. It's really remarkable to me that we have a group of committed staff as well as volunteers in our community who have worked across the community and the district to develop this new school. So, why bother to do that? Well, why not maybe, as we previously mentioned, work on current issues within the walls of our existing buildings? Well, the answer to me is really quite simple, and I think it has been simple for our Governance and Advisory Board too, which is why we have been so committed to working on this project. And that's that, and really, in some ways, it should be nagging all of you as school board members, as it did me when I stepped into my school board shoes, that we have a need for a different delivery model of education, and that need is not going away. We could argue that the timing of this school is poor because we have all of these task force recommendations coming to us, but what great school district doesn't look at different ways of innovating as their students' needs change and grow? That's what we should be doing. Those task forces are doing exactly what we should be doing, to look at different things that we need at this time as our students change. When, and none of those task force recommendations, however, will change the fact that we, as a school district, owe it to our learners to look at an approach for those who are, needs are not being met right now. We hear this message as school board members when we attend the Wisconsin State Convention every year, when we have the speakers come before us and talk about innovative ways of teaching and students who respond in independent, problem-solving, real-world situations. In fact, we hear this message on a national level when we listen to speakers like Bill Daggett, who has the Model Schools Conference every year, which is a national conference. And in that national conference, not only is it understood that there is a, that there are things that we could do differently in our educational system, but that we must do them, that innovation must take place as our students' needs are changing. These elements can all be found in expeditionary learning for students. The data is really clear that this delivery method works. And our complicated world calls for unique problem solvers who can collaborate, and it is exactly those skills that will be taught to the students at Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning. As expeditionary learning schools state, we are crew, not passengers. And so, what we, as a Governance and Advisory Board, are asking of you as a school board is to work together with us as a crew to try and problem solve a way, along with the administration, to offer this educational delivery model to our students. And I think that we can, and I think that we should, and I think that you've heard and agree with a lot of the educational points to why this school should be in existence in our district. So, it's for that reason that we come to you once again to ask for your support, and I hope you'll consider it, and we'll continue to answer questions as best we can. Thank you.
Connie, did you have some final comments on the recommendations for tonight?
So, at the November 25th meeting, we asked for you to approve the contract, and there were lots of questions and concerns. So, at this time, the change would be that we asked the board to make a motion to approve the concept of moving forward with an expeditionary learning school model. And recommend, last two, on this, the last part of the sheet, is that we recommend that we all work together to look for solutions in that funding, with the funding issues, given that there are those four different options that Tom reviewed.
And then, lastly, obviously, is that we agree to, we're either going to, we're going to vote on the contract no later than January 27th, so that you all can continue your work.
Correct.
We're not committing to doing it, but just that we commit.
We would need to be on that timeline. Our first desire was to have things in order and decisions made in December, because, as I mentioned, one of the next steps would be posting those positions, specifically first, the lead teacher position, getting that right person in place, making sure that that teacher then has a very highly qualified sub to lead his or her classroom for the rest of the semester. But we can hold off until January 27th. It doesn't put us on our ideal timeline, but it still could occur.
All right. Thank you, Connie, and all of the presenters tonight. While we have them up here, do we have, are there any more questions from the board before, from, of them, before we begin our deliberations? Lisa?
Well, when I read through this, you know, and I think it's great. I mean, so just accept that, even though I have my reservations. I don't see the community involvement in here that we claim or that it insinuates, unless I'm reading this wrong. Was there more community input that I'm not aware of, other than this committee? I mean, did we go out and talk to the community? I mean, I'm a little, I mean, I know, you know, when I look at the, you know, the people who were on the committee, you know, Terry was a community member at the time, but again, he's, you know, here. So, I mean, did you guys go outside?
Every initiative starts with this, a little spark.
Right.
And Mary Jo and I had talked for quite some time about project-based learning in general, and we went to visit DC Everest Project-Based Charter, and then we went to Marathon and visited their charter. And then, Mary Jo really did solicit quite a few folks from our community, including Chris and Jeremy, Alan, Elizabeth is here, and she's been involved, and folks that have been very much involved, whether through UWSP, environmental education, or parenting, in looking for ideas about project-based learning. We learned quickly that expeditionary learning was just an exceptional model. And so, that planning team met all of last year and then came to the board, as somebody mentioned with the documents, I think, February and March, with the idea of applying for the planning grant. And then presented that planning grant with the timeline, that should you have a planning grant, then that moves into the implementation. So, actually, to answer your question, there have been, it's been a large planning team, in addition to the community members, quite a few staff members from the district. Again, just interested in looking at this kind of instructional delivery model.
Yeah, I just had some comments. Jen mentioned something, I apologize if I can call you Jen, of the Governance Board. I did get some emails from them, but for every email I received, I received four negative ones, maybe not emails, but out doing Christmas shopping, Christmas holiday stuff. People aren't for spending this kind of money on 100, and I'm going to round it up, 170 students. You also mentioned, we owe it to our learners. What about the other 6,000 to 7,000 learners that we have, that we can't even give extra time to our staff to give those students more time, to give those teachers more time? We're talking about, same thing with this Life Skill Center, 10 to 12 children, we're working on there, maybe 50, maybe. Now, we're talking about 170 students, tops, spending almost $1 million, like 981,000 for this students. I have to look at for the whole ball of it. Great, if we can bring these students back into our class, into the school, great. I don't project that, that we're going to get all of them in there. They're out there for a reason. They're doing it for a reason. So, I guess that's my comments on that, and I don't like the words "should" and "we think almost we'll get them back." We can't do that with our money. We've cut too many other programs, so.
Well, I've got a lot, so do you want me to start now or later? Again, we're at the point, if any more questions for these folks while they're up. Chris?
I would like to ask it. You know, I was on the Facilities Committee, actually, I think it's the second or third since I've been on the Board, Facilities Committee. I know we have the other task forces coming forward, but over the years, being a parent of a student who went through some elementary and then junior high and high school here, who had many, many friends, and I was friends with many of the parents, and then got on the school board, and one of the things that was talked about, and Angel, I think you and I both mentioned that six, seven, eight age group, something happens, and there are a number of students who fall away. So, as I looked at what the proposals, because I know board members said, well, let's wait until this all comes through, I'm looking at these proposals that may come through, and I'm thinking, even if they come through, this is still a necessity, because it's not a one-size-fits-all anywhere, and we know that. I mean, we continually do that. So, I guess what I'm asking, because I'm not an educator, I'm asking, should we change the grades, the grade alignment, or the graduation task cards, all of the things that we're looking at, that we're going to come back at, is this still a viable option for the students who do need and will succeed at project-based learning? Because I've read now, more than I had ever before, about expeditionary and project-based, and it feels so right. And I'm thinking, if we did something like this, wouldn't this, like, set in motion the possibility of having that in other places in our district? So, but the task force thing is what I guess I'm asking.
I think there's just, there's a lot of very, very committed folks to the expeditionary learning model. Part of what makes it unique is its smaller environment. And I, you know, I do recall, and this will date me, but I do recall having gone through Emerson School, and then somewhere at some time, somebody brought up the idea that we have a need for an alternative school for high school students. And we took a look at using Emerson School, and that started out small, but there was a need, and then it worked. And right now, you wouldn't think of not having the Fernandez Alternative School. And those are how things happen. Should this not go through? I mean, I just think we're really committed to this learning model and to find a way that to deliver this to our students in some way, because it's successful. It works. And so that's why, you know, we're pretty passionate, and we understand the restrictions, and we understand financial is an issue. We understand we're one group of people that want one slice of resources that a lot of other folks do, too. But we also believe that there is a need in our district, and we're not gonna find anything different for kids unless we try something different for kids.
Can I just make one comment? I know this is kind of, I'm not using my diplomacy here, because I'm not being asked to speak, but I just read an article today about Siemens, how they're coming into this country. They wanna build things in this country, they can't find the work staff. And they are bringing in their own apprenticeship programs, starting in high schools. They're spending hundreds of millions of dollars. Volkswagen's doing the same thing. Many technology companies are coming into this country. They want to build things here. And the biggest problem that we're lacking is the skills of creative thinking and problem-solving. That's why I've gotten involved here, because we've been in business here for 30 years, and I work with a youth apprenticeship program, but I can see there's still this need. And when the kids come into this environment where they actually start doing something that they recognize, their grades go up in school automatically. There's a purpose. And I think we could touch all kids, and that's what I think this program is, it's a start, but I think all kids could benefit from this, if this paradigm goes throughout the whole university, the whole school district.
I just wanna say briefly, Ms. Shirk was right about one aspect, and we were actually saying the same thing, but miscommunicating, and I wanted to acknowledge that. Students who are homeschooled do not get, we do not get aid for the portion in which they're homeschooled. If they come to our district and receive services from us on a part-time basis, the number of hours that they're here with us receiving services, we can count that aspect of it. So if that's what you're referring to, you're right, in that homeschool can be in our count, but not for homeschooling. So I think we're saying the same thing, but just kinda miscommunicating there, or not connecting. But I was talking about a student coming to us and getting all of their services from us, and being enrolled in our district would be a complete new count. Or coming to us for services beyond what they're already receiving. So, just so that.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification, Tom. Jeff Ebel, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. What do you think is a reasonable timeframe to see, start seeing results in this program?
I'm gonna turn that to Mia, who has more experience. When you look at academic achievement, so whether you're using SRI, SMI, MAP scores, any type of standardized testing, you have about a two-year window where you're going to have fairly similar data results, but then your students at an EL school will begin out distancing the students that are using more of a traditional model. I shared last time we were here, some of the data from Marathon, where we were, they were actually out distancing the consortium schools by, I think it was 16 points, and they are in year four implementation, a full implementation. Year five, first year they're kind of dabbling in a little bit. So you look at first, kids becoming familiar with that model in year one, and it's a transition to that type of critical thinking model, but then as you begin to be part of that model, and your teachers craft their expeditions, you begin to outdistance the other schools. So, and there, I mean, there was data from that last time. We came back.
Renee, did you have questions for the group while they're in front of us?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Lisa, another question?
Could you, you know, you spoke about how, you know, this would, could help all our students. Is there a reason we're not starting there instead of doing the charter school? Could we do that instead? Just start teaching our teachers? I mean, is there a reason we can't do that instead?
One of the components of an EL school is that the school starts with crew, which you could kinda term like an advisory program, but because it's so project-based, it's space, and there's not necessarily bells every 45 minutes, and kids passing every 45 minutes. There might be a project by which, for three hours that morning, the kids are all doing their writing, because they're creating brochures about the problem that they're getting involved in the community, you know what I mean? So because it's so integrated, it would be really hard at schools of, mine is 805, and PJ's is 700 and some, just to create that kind of space that you need for project-based.
Address that just a second, and actually tie together a couple of comments. There's the question about why there's so much money in there for staff time and travel and all of that. And the reason is because it's a way different way of teaching, right? And so to expect to go into a current school setting and just say, do something different, can't work. There has to be an investment in time and training and focused learning from other institutions, other schools that have done this. And so I think that gets at the core of why you have to do this as a separate school and a separate thing, and why it takes money to do that. It's a completely different way, and teachers, in their experience, and this is why the university is interested in as well, in their experiences, learning to be teachers and in teaching, aren't exposed to this type of model. We at the university would like to see them exposed to this type of model, which is why we're a partner in this, but you can't just expect them to get up one day and say, oh, we're gonna do a different thing. You know, it's a, we're just gonna start doing it. It takes time and a focused effort to do that. So that kinda fits the piece together, and why the DPI is investing money into teacher training to do these types of different things.
I have a question.
My previous background was as a teacher, and I began, six years ago, looking at the EL model from a teacher lens, knowing that we had a group of students that just were not fitting traditional classroom setting in, you know, in Marathon. And we went out on a limb and did the charter school thing, and, you know, fully implemented EL, and went through the training, and the professional development is, it changes who you are as a teacher. There's no other way of explaining that. And in doing that, there was also some resistance in our building, because we were doing things differently. But as teachers that were outside of the model began to see our celebrations of learning, or the way that our kids were working with community members, and the work that they were creating, we had teachers that were stopping and saying, by the way, what exactly is it that you're doing this week? Because that looked really cool. Or, you know, we had kids that were working with our elementary kids, and what happens is, is teachers begin to talk about what's going well, and how you're able to overcome some issues that every teacher faces, and what's going on in Marathon, and what does happen in other schools. You begin to see like a trickle-down effect, and you begin to see teachers starting to grasp on the small bits and pieces of the model, and it just becomes better instructional practice of who you are as a teacher. So it does happen. It's a slower process when you have the trickle-down effect, but when you have a core group of staff that really have the model down well, and are reaching kids and showing that type of progress, good teachers want to become better. And that's just how the profession would work. And I've seen it, you know, in the building I was in, and in other schools that I now work with as well.
I've got a question. On your estimated opening of Jackson School, November 25, it was 965,000, and it went up a little bit to 981. But in your numbers, when I looked at your original worksheet, where you had your line items, like 1 through 60, on this 981,000, does that include FICA and Medicare taxes? Employer-paid benefits?
Tom, incorrect, those.
Total contracted professional services?
Yeah, it does, Beth.
Supplies?
Well, the supplies.
Because there was 371,000 for supplies that second year.
Well, the grant monies, why don't you explain that, Connie?
On the final sheet of your packet from tonight, the district-funded costs are all those costs that charter money cannot support. And the reason charter school money does not support those things is they are ongoing costs that are needed to sustain the building. DPI doesn't wanna hand out money to start new schools, and then when the grants go away, the school goes away. So that's why you ask for a district obligation. That's why you become an instrumentality, and you contract with the board and saying, yep, we're gonna supply the staff, food service, and transportation. But those, the grants can fund curriculum materials, textbooks, computers, technologies, even one-time costs for wiring a building for the technologies. Those kinds of things, you need to get the school going, and that's what implementation grant monies. Now, but, so when we did the planning grant, that was just the best estimate of those things. And, but the final sheet here is a much better estimate based on what grant monies are now available through the state, and what actual costs are for that amount of staff. When we did the planning grant, we didn't know exactly how many students. We worked with the school designer, and so we had more administrative costs. We don't have an administrator assigned to this, and we had more teachers. So that's why the funds from the planning grant don't match this exactly.
But let me ask you this question, and I'm just going by your paperwork. You add your first year, you were going to spend 192,000 substitute teachers, travel, and then you had 32,000 left for laptops, et cetera. What are you going to set aside for year two, three, and four of your grant money? Again, for travel, substitute? Are you telling me all that grant money's gonna go into supplies, and there's, we're not gonna be paying for substitute teachers and travel?
Well, once the school's open, you would have some professional development time. You will still be working with expeditionary learning, you know, into the first few years, but the money for the school designers and the professional development goes down every single year.
And I'm using your numbers. Total contracted professional services year one was 84,500. Total purchased operational services, 80,056. Year two, professional services goes to 76,300, and total purchased operational services go to 11,300. So I mean, when I start adding all this up, and then there was another line there for supplies, we're way over. You know, they say it's gonna cost a million to open this school. I'd be looking at like 6 million if you wanted to operate this school for year two, three, four, and five. I think the numbers are low at a million. And then the rest I'll save when it's time for us.
The planning grant, the DPI asks you to give a five-year best estimate on costs. But the reality of what happens is that you have to apply for those grant monies every single year.
Okay.
So the most concrete costs would be those for staff.
All right, then, one final one, and I'll save the rest for when we have discussion. But on November 25, and this was the information that I received from you on a phone call, for the five years, grant money was 925,000, five, 925,000. Two weeks later, tonight, 12:09, it dropped down to 820,000. What happened to the 105? And that's the problem that I have, is there's so many ifs in this thing. There's so many gray areas. Maybe we're gonna get the money, maybe we're not. But just in that two-week window, the grant money, we lost 105,000 of it. What happened to it?
Well, as I said, the DPI had to go for an extension, and now they're only going to be funding 85% of grants moving forward. And there is gray area. That's how it goes with grants.
Well, you see what I'm saying? In two weeks, we lost 105,000. And now the DPI. So what's gonna happen? Can you talk to them in two weeks?
I don't know. I don't know.
That's.
But the biggest costs for the school are staff, which is really the biggest commitment between the school board and the governance board.
Right.
Because if the grants go down, then you adjust your supply amount, or you just adjust your PD. And all of those come yearly. You write the grant, and you get those funds, you write a budget. What you have at the planning grant was, Mary Jo sat down with Jen from School Design and said, here is what we think is gonna come in, and here's what we think, this is how many teachers we think it's going to be. But the reality is, it comes year to year. Just like the planning grant that we got for this year, $225,000, we've expended about 35, 36,000 of that. We thought we would be expending a lot more by this time. It's just not how it all played out. The grant monies, you can do your budget adjustments all the time. The biggest cost for the school is staff, which is why that is the biggest conversation, mainly.
Right, and grant money cannot be used to pay salaries and benefits?
Correct.
Well, that's a problem. Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
Hopefully, this will be my last question, but the more you talk, then I have questions. When you said, when you talked about, when I brought up about bringing this type of learning into everybody, and then it was, you know, said that, well, this is a whole different area, and you had stated that teachers, you know, would say, oh, that looks really cool, how can I do it, blah, blah, blah. How are they going to see it if you guys are in a separate building? Either I misunderstood something, or, you know, I mean.
That's kind of what sets EL apart from a traditional model, in that schools invite community members to come in. There's one, they're actually two separate pieces. So a celebration of learning is when students are at the end of a trimester, at the end of a quarter, at the end of an expedition, and they've done research, and they've worked in the field, and they've created some type of solution or informational piece that goes out to the community. Just call it a celebration of learning. Anybody in the community can come in and see what kids have done, and in fact, Marathon just had their celebration of learning two weeks ago, and they had a full gymnasium of people from the entire community honoring veterans that the students put together, and that was their celebration. So what happens is you don't have a closed-door policy of your school. It is open, and kids are looking for ways to bring community in, and that includes teaching staff. So it's not kind of this little school off on its own. It's very much a school that is looking for community partnerships, which is why Stephen's Point is such a perfect location, because of the possibility for these types of partnerships and bringing in people from all over the community with expertise. So it is something that's open, and when you begin to see community involved in your school that way, and coming to your school building, people that don't necessarily visit your school, that don't even have children that are enrolled in a school right now, it's a way for them to see and really understand what school means for the community, and not just parents that have kids in the school. I must invite you.
And I understand that. It's the teacher, the trickling down, taking it longer for the rest of the staff to understand.
And any teachers that have been reading the materials or watching this board meeting, there are phenomenal teachers in this district, many of which are doing project-based learning within their classroom. Many. In fact, many are starting to get, looking at flipped classrooms. There's a whole lot of innovation going on in our district. And lots of teachers would say, I do that in, Project Lead the Way, Technology Education, within several science classes at both junior highs, they're doing so much project-based. This is just that on a bigger scale.
Okay, so, okay.
I just have two pieces of information. When Connie mentioned that, or was asked about the number of homeschooled students, there are 58 great 6, 7, 8. If, and I'm not suggesting this is going to happen, but you have to have a starting place, 58 of those students, if they came back into the district, assuming they were all homeschooled and we weren't getting a prorated share, that would be $373,000. There are 50 students who are open and rolled out of the district in grade 6, 7, 8. That 50, we would receive about 61,000. That fifty, we would receive about sixty-one-hundred dollars from, if they returned to the district. That's three-hundred-and-five-thousand. So, um, those numbers are not for sure, but it, at least as a starting point. And again, that's assuming that the homeschool students are not receiving services and, and we're not getting state reimbursement in terms of, uh, prorated, so.
And fifty-eight was my best guess at remembering those numbers that Barb provided. Please acknowledge.
And there are fifty that are open enrolled, so that's a, that, that's another number to take into consideration.
Okay, and I'm, I'll just add one comment to something that, that Connie added, and a couple of weeks ago, I was asked to be a chaperone out at Boston School Forest, and Cindy Solinsky's seventh-grade class is doing their measurement stuff, you know, and feet and meters and all this stuff. So, I agreed to go along, and we were out at the forest on a real foggy, wet day, and we broke the kids into groups of like five or six, and they all had their wheels, and we had maps, and we took different segments of trail, and they were simply doing, you know, picking out, you know, okay, we're, we leave this trail, we go to this trail, making the limitations, the measurements, and eventually, what they're going to do is incorporate those measurements into the maps of the trails out of Boston School Forest. So that's just one small example of, of the project-based stuff that's going on in a lot of different classrooms. All right, Connie, and Alan, and, and Mia, and Christine, and Jeremy, and Jen, thank you so much for the time and, and for the presentation, and we'll begin our deliberations.
May I start?
Sure.
All right. The first recommendation they were talking about was taking a million dollars roughly out of the fund balance. And I think a while ago, we received an audit, and how large a fund balance. Determination of an appropriate fund balance is a critical factor in a district's financial planning and budgeting processes, but it's strictly a local matter. The Department of Public Instruction makes no recommendation regarding the amount of a district should have in their general fund balance. As of nine-twenty-three, two thousand and thirteen, PMA, our financial advisors, report that the median fund balance of a double-A-two Moody rating, which is a very good rating, uh, should be about twenty-point-three percent in the fund balance. And that's where we are right now, twenty-point-three percent. They recommend that we should maintain the fund balance at twenty to twenty-five percent. I mean, I could read a whole bunch of this stuff, but I'll just use the bottom statement, why I'd be against taking money out of the fund balance. Perhaps the best answer would be an amount sufficient to avoid short-term borrowing for cash flow and allows the district to set aside sufficient assets to realize long-range goals, like one savings account. Once cash is expended from the fund balance, it is a difficult and lengthy process to rebuild the balance. So, taking money out of the fund balance, I would not recommend. I'd be totally opposed to that. Uh, number two, delay the opening of Jackson until two thousand and fourteen, I think it was second semester, or is that second semis?
Second.
All right. Doesn't solve the two big problems. The district doesn't have the funds to support this proposal, and a five-year contract before getting the recommendations from our task force this spring, two thousand and fourteen, doesn't make any sense. Delay the Jackson opening till first semester, two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, this is not an option. We lose the grant money, and that's the main reason we're having this discussion, is the grant money. So I would see no reason to sign a five-year contract. Option four is do not approve the contract between the district and JMSL. That's my option. Now, I've got a few more things. We closed Jackson School in two thousand and five and six because of declining enrollment and budget constraints. Two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, we still have the same problem. We've got declining enrollments, budget constraints. To open Jackson School, the Stevens Point District is going to need a million dollars. We do not have the money, so I would like the administration to let me know what programs you're planning to cut, or how many employees you plan to lay off to make this thing work. The board spent time and money on four studies: facility, grade-level configuration, graduation requirements, and they're wrapping up their annual study rev- schedule review. How can we sign a five-year contract before we know what the recommendations that the task force will present to the board in the spring, two thousand and fourteen? These recommendations could impact Jackson School. And after, I pass this out, everybody has one, after I looked at the facility study, I could not look to the taxpayers in the eye if I voted to open Jackson School, and here's why. And I'm just taking three schools. Third priority enrollment dated nine-twenty-thirteen, Ben Franklin at seven-hundred-and-seventy-five students, and PJ's at seven-hundred-and-forty-eight. Now, working capacity, which is ninety or eighty percent, Ben Franklin, thirteen-hundred-and-six students at that percentage, PJ's one-thousand-ninety-six. Ben Franklin, we have five-hundred-and-thirty-one students difference. We're only using fifty-nine percent of the capacity of that school right now. PJ's, there's three-hundred-and-forty-eight seats that we can utilize in that school. We're at sixty-eight percent current capacity. These numbers say loud and clear, do not open Jackson School, use our current facilities for elementary charter school for expeditionary learning. At the board meeting, and I talked about this, I'll skip that part, I looked at the March eleventh agenda item, eleven-D dot one, and on the cover page, it lists that all the people involved on the charter planning. Two people on the charter planning team are now serving on this board, President Terry Rothman, board member Renee Shibley. I believe being on the planning team and now serving on this board would be perceived by the public as a conflict of interest, and I would request they recuse themselves and not vote on this item. The three recommendations on the bottom of your sheet, motion to approve board support for concept and educational value of the GMSL, recommend the board, GSL, governor's board, administration, uh, to solve the problem, and recommend the board to wait till January twenty-seventh. These aren't recommendations, these are delays. So, I plan to make a motion, when all the discussion is done, to not approve the contract between the Stevens Point School District and the Jackson Middle School for Expeditionary Learning. The timing is not right. We have to wait for the studies, and looking at the current space available, just in PJ's and Ben Franklin, it screams not to open Jackson. Thank you.
Um, if, if, we don't have to make a decision until January twenty-seventh, can we get the studies, the results, into the board for our evaluation prior to that date?
I'm sorry, Lisa, get what studies?
The facility study, the grade realignment, all of that, so that, I mean, we can't get it before the...
Well, you already have the studies. You have each of those.
Right, but the compilation.
Right. You can't convene a group of thirty, forty, forty-five people between now and January twenty-seventh and ask them to go through four major studies, of which you're going to receive the fourth one on December the, December the six...
Next one, Dana.
Next, next sixteenth. That's, that's an impossible task. So the whole goal was to give that group the second semester to really review all of those task force reports and then come back to the board.
And if, if I'm understanding correctly, and we have already, we already have teachers doing this project-based learning, um, and so we're already starting from the grassroots without this charter school, I don't understand why we can't continue until we get our, our results. I just can't imagine why we would think that would be fiscally responsible to commit to this without those studies.
Angel?
Um, a couple of things. First of all, I think we're all on here, obviously for our own reasons, but ultimately to educate the students in this district, just not for today, so they're educated, but for the future, so they have a future, and we have a future, because they're going to take care of us, sort of thing. Um, and so that's kind of how I weigh each of the decisions that come before us, is like, which, which one is going to promote what our community needs in the future, which one is going to promote kids staying here, investing in our future, that sort of thing? That, that's just how I weigh things. I totally get it, that everything that, basically everything that comes before us is going to cost money, it's just which ones are worth investing in. To me, this one is so worth investing in because of what potentially it could do. No one's going to be able to give us black and white hard facts on what, what's going to come as a result of it. But the one thing that came to mind while everybody was talking, um, and, the, sorry, this is only example I have from McDill School, because that's where my kids have been, but, so I'm on my eighth, sixth grader, and they've all done something called the Economics Bazaar. And at the Economics Bazaar, they have to choose a project, um, they have to create it, they have to promote it, and then they have to build it, they have to sell it, and they have to go through the profit and loss, they have to go through this whole huge process. It takes probably two months, and that's how they sell things for Christmas, that sort of thing. Without a doubt, that is the most valuable project my kids have ever done, and each one, as they come up, like now I have, like I said, I have my eighth, sixth grader there, he has thought about what he's going to build for this thing for years. He's looked into it, he's drawn pictures, he's, as every new movie comes out, he's asked his brothers and sisters how much money they've made, how much they get to keep, how much they paid to pay back in. It's just, I think what I love about it so much is what it starts doing to their minds. You have to start thinking about what's next, and I think as soon as one kid starts getting excited, the next kid starts getting excited. And that's, I guess that's what I'd love to see in this community, is something that's inspiring that sort of thinking, that sort of creativity, that sort of inspiration, um, simple, yay, it's all about my family, it's not. But, the, just an idea that I, I had, we, um, I've been working a lot lately, and my kids have been home alone on Saturdays, and I'll come home and like, they have bloodshot eyes and drool from sitting in front of the television all day, and it was like irritating me to no end. And so I kept saying, you guys, you're smart, you're creative, you have Legos, you have this, do something. Never did anything. Every day, same thing, I come back. So finally, one day, I wrote a note, and I said, every one of you needs to make me a minion by the time I come home. I don't care what you use, but I'll be, I'll be rating them all, and whoever makes the best minion gets a prize. Oh my gosh, there were flow charts and projects, and one made of Legos, and one made of this, one out of the recycling bin. I mean, it was a project. I gave them something, and I gave them direction, I kind of, it was the difference between me saying do something and me saying do something, here's the direction, um, use your minds, work with each other. They did, they helped each other all day. My oldest daughter stopped by that day, and she's like, I don't know what you said to them, but they're all sitting at a table with the recycling bin in between them making minions right now. So, that's what I want to see, that's what I'd love to see my kids doing every day and learning how to do, so that the next time they're faced with a problem, they think, what should I do? What should I do to make this work? That's why I support this, that's why I would invest. I think it's a worthy investment of our funds to try it and see if it catches fire, and if it's a great thing for our district or not.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you know where we're going to get that million dollars for the first year, and then a million every other year afterwards? Are we just going to lay off people and, uh, cut programs in other schools?
I think you know...
They have to look at the total.
The last thing I'd ever want to do is lay anybody off, for sure.
Well, that's what you're going to be looking at.
So, if that's, if, I mean, if it's a legitimate question, you'd like me to answer?
For sure.
Okay. I've always been someone who's said, like, hey, when it comes to something this important, tap into that fund balance. I have been told that's not an option every time, but I do believe that it's an option to start something up like this. I also believe, and my head starts spinning immediately, what grants are available, what else is available, uh, what if every single person who has a Target red puck card puts one percent towards JMSL? Things like that. Target gives back tons of money, other businesses give back tons of money, where else can we go? And I think all they're asking today is, do you buy this idea, not, can we have all your money? They want to know that, are, are, are you with the idea, and we'll get as creative as we need to get. And I'm saying, I'm with you, I'll get as creative as you need to get too, and I, I just hope we can get behind them. This seems like a very smart, creative, inspired group.
Kim?
My scare with that, Angel, is you say yes, and all of a sudden, you've got a small little duplex being a five-hundred-thousand-dollar, state-of-the-art kitchen. That's my fear with saying a yes. Why don't we take that million dollars that Bob's talking about spending, where we're going to come for it, for sure? Why don't we put it into all of our teachers? Let them continue with their project-based teaching. I know teachers, they, they did it back when my kids were there, and that was many, many years ago. Why not give that million dollars back into all of our students? You know, because just like I asked them up there, yeah, we owe it to our learners, but do we owe it to a hundred-and-seventy learners? Or do we owe it to our six, seven-thousand learners? I've been told many years, being on this board, you don't ever take anything out of the fund balance that can't support or stand by its own. Many, many times. I mean, since we've been here, we've cut, we've cut, we've cut. This year, we're spending, as the community's been telling me, like a drunken sailor. You know, I've heard that when I was out shopping, what are you guys spending money on? Yeah, he found a hundred, uh, one-point-five-million dollars, but we're spending eight, ten, twelve million? Like, I know my budget can't handle that. We cut the music project for our elementary. We couldn't take it out of the fund balance. We can't support it. That's what I was told. It's not going to be a million dollars. We cut, um, electives for students up at Spash. They can't do anything extra. They don't have that extra support up there. We make them pay for their sports now. Now we're going to give a hundred-and-seventy students a fun ride? And I, I can guarantee you, hey, I was in the school where you read, you read, you read, you didn't do any project-based stuff. This would have been ideal for me. But I just, it might be a good idea, and it might be super, but let's support all of our teachers to do the project-based. Let's give them the million dollars. We had a heck of a time giving them a hundred-and-two-thousand, or whatever that is. And we heard from our superintendent over and over, we can't do it because we can't sustain it. How are we going to sustain a million dollars every year? It just, we have to get those studies back to see where we're going. We have to look into the future a little bit better than we have been, because when people get off the board and when our superintendent decides to leave, we're left holding the bag. The people left in this community are left holding the taxes and the, the projects that we can't afford anymore. So I will not be supporting this.
Jeff?
Is it possible for the administration to get a hold of PMA and run a five-year projection based on the current programs that we have? Ten and two, keep that program at the high school, keep the current scheduling, they can run those projections for us and see if it is sustainable, to something that the administration is able to do for us?
If you want us to run a, a sustainability projection, we could do it. It's, it'll be, it's easier to do, uh, well, I won't say that. In terms of this, uh, the staffing costs will be dependent upon raises that the district gives and health insurance increases and that kind of thing. So, I, I mean, we could make some of those projections, and as you suggest, ask PMA to do that. Jeff, I honestly don't know how, how good the numbers would be, but we could certainly do it. And that's part of why I think the recommendation was to wait until the twenty-seventh, was to give us an opportunity to work with the board and the administration and the governance board to see if we could find areas where, where we might be able to, um, get those So if that's a request on the part of the board, we'll, we'll certainly fulfill that request.
I guess the second comment would be, you know, this sounds like a great program, and, but at the end of the day, I mean, I, I share some of the concern that we want it sustainable, that's why I'm asking for the PMA, but also waiting for our studies, because if we gain some efficiencies from our studies and save money, maybe it will ease some of the concerns on the board as far as, you know, making that five-year leap of faith, so to speak, um, in supporting a program like this. I don't know. That's, that's one of the things that kind of weighs in my mind. Um, I think there's great opportunities with this, I just want to make sure that we, if we do it, we're going to do it for five years.
Chris?
Um, Jeff, and I, I'll just ask, ask you, when you're talking about efficiencies from those studies, you know, are you talking about money, extra money, us having extra money from those?
Sure.
From where? Could you give me an example?
Well, I'm not on the studies, first of all, but...
I know, but...
I mean, I haven't...
Obviously, you asked the question, so you have something in mind that...
Well, the, the grade realignment might save us money, uh, may save us costs in busing, and may save us costs, and I, I mean, I'm trying to think of what else. We could have efficiencies if we went to the same number of hours at our middle schools as what is at Spash, would reduce the number of hours that those schedules match. Uh, I, I mean, there could be a, a lot of things that are unseen to this board at this point in time, but may be a recommendation from those studies. We don't know.
I address a question that Bob, or a point that Bob made. I don't think any, at, at least in my conversations with Jen and Connie and, and members of the, the team, there, there was really no, there was no attempt to delay this, Bob. It was to, to truly try to find if the, if the board supported the concept, to, to give more time to see if there were opportunities to find funding. One of those ways is to maybe lock down, and I don't want to speak for Jen and the governance board, and Jen, maybe you want to speak to this, is to find out from those parents and students who are homeschooled and open enrolled out, if that, if a, if a expeditionary learning charter school were to exist in the district, would they commit to returning to the district in order to retrieve those dollars? to returning to the district in order to retrieve those dollars? I don't know if that's something that a governance board would be prepared to do or not, that, that's another option.
We've had members of our advisory board who have been in communication with homeschool groups and we just don't have any hard numbers, which is why we don't want to share numbers with the board tonight, um, but there certainly is interest, we just don't have hard numbers as to how much interest is. So we'll continue to pursue those lines of discussion.
Well, my question, Jen, was would it be possible between now and the end of January to get those hard numbers? Or is that asking too much?
I think that it's certainly possible to get an idea.
Excuse me, can someone come up to the mic? I cannot hear and I don't think the other listeners can either if you're not speaking at the mic.
Okay, Jen's coming up, thanks Renee.
You're welcome.
Sorry Renee, we'll, we'll try again. Um, so we've had communication with homeschool groups to find out if there's an interest for some homeschool families to come back and be, have an interest in this type of um, learning model. And there is an interest, we just don't have hard numbers for how much. So it wouldn't be, it would be a little disingenuous tonight to say, yes, we have this many families because we don't have that kind of information at this time. But we certainly could between now and the end of January, continue to pursue those lines of communication and try and find out how many people would be interested in coming back. So, yes, I think that we could do that and we will do that.
As long as I got you up there, I got a question for you.
Okay, Bob.
And Connie, you might be able to answer this one pretty good. Your capacity at Ben Franklin right now, you've got 531 available seats in that building that you're not using right now. I'm looking at the 9/20 Friday enrollment count was 775. At 80% of your school capacity, you could handle 1,306 children. That means you got 531 empty seats in that school. If this thing is so great and you're so passionate about it, then why don't you stick it in Ben Franklin School? And that'll solve a lot of our problems.
We, we actually have a charter school within our school called CARE and that number is in, in the 775, which is why my enrollment's at 805.
But you're still below, you still have flexibility in your school, is what I'm saying, and you have no idea how many kids you're going to get in this school. Could be 150, could be 50, you don't know. So why can't you stick this school in Ben Franklin or put it in PJ?
Cause I would, I would need a wing to run a project-based expeditionary learning school, the way it's supposed to run, that gets the results that they've received, I would have to close a wing. You need to have the space. I can't put it in one classroom and they have the expeditionary learning kids travel every hour, um, to a different classroom, it's just not how that works.
Okay, but what I've been getting questions on, you've got the capacity in your schools based on your numbers, we just have to fix it, which is going to come in the spring of 2014 and the task force is going to give the recommendations to the board. How can you justify to the taxpayers, on a maybe you're going to get a grant, on a maybe you're going to have X number of students, and we should open up that school and spend four, five, six million dollars for 150 maybes? I mean, where do I take, who do we cut jobs out of the district? We don't have the money right now.
Bob, I'm, I'm sorry, but that line of questioning is not fair for these two.
Well, I'm just asking a question.
It's asked for a discussion amongst the board.
Fine, whatever.
I see a number of raised hands, but we've got people who haven't had a chance to speak.
Just a couple, a couple numbers because we're adamant and, and passionate about numbers. Um, one thing that I just wanted to mention that is on the first page of your memo, um, there seems to be, um, a perception that the cost to run JMSEL is higher than what it's costing the district right now for a student and that, that's not the case. It's not going to be, if you go to JMSEL, the district is not spending more money on you by attending that school, if you look at the first paragraph. In terms of taking a look at what our projected staffing costs are at a per pupil expenditure with all of the services, it's not going to, if you attend JMSEL, the district's not spending more money on you than if you spent, go to Ben Franklin Junior High School, in fact, it's less. Cause there's different kinds of services, there aren't administrators in the building, it's very different. Um, the second is, I just went back because I'm, I really want to be right on numbers. There's 100 and, there's 197 students homeschooled right now, these are the numbers from Skyward that Barb supplied to me, 197 students, 97 families. Roughly, it's a fluid, but roughly 32 in grade six through eight, but another one, another 58 students that are ungraded. So I had my numbers a little bit, I just want to make sure we're clear on that, okay?
Thanks Connie and Jen. Jeff, you've not had a chance to weigh in yet, any, anything?
I, I, thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity, yeah, I, I do have some, some things to say about this. And, uh, listening to the conversations and the statements about the budget, I, I totally agree. I mean, this is, it's a lot of money and it's an, at least locally, it's unproven. We really don't know what we're going to get out of it. But I also ask myself, if someone came to me and said that I could improve student scores by 15 points, you know, what would that be worth? How much would you pay for that? Somehow we justify paying whatever we're paying now, the status quo, to educate our kids. And everything I know about this program, it's got, um, it's got good history, it's got data, it's data, data-driven, uh, it, it has shown to be very effective. Um, I, I think we are charged with, uh, watching out for the taxpayers' money. If we don't do this, if we don't move forward, if we don't address, uh, our standings internationally in education, we have been doing a very good job in the state, we've been doing a pretty good job nationally, but we know that on, on the world level, we're having a hard time keeping pace. And here's an opportunity, a new type of learning, which really resonates with me. If we, uh, don't pay for it now, we're probably all going to be paying for it later. In the lack of economic opportunities in our community, in just the cost of not being able to compete in the world. So, I, I look at this and, and I have a hard time figuring out how we can't do this.
Thank you. Renee, we've not heard from you, any, anything you wish to add to the discussion?
Um, yes, um, thank you. I have a couple comments, um, one of which is I just want to, um, clear the record, I did sit in when they were organizing this charter, uh, for three meetings. I withdrew from the project because I figured there would maybe be a perceived conflict, so I wanted to make sure that I was clean and that I wasn't a part of this. I understand that when Connie sent it out, she mentioned anyone that had been any part of this, so that's why my name appeared. However, I was not, um, an ongoing person that sat in on this planning committee. I attended three meetings. Um, secondly is, I think that the district really needs to take a look at charter schools and how we get our funding. I think that the school district has taken advantage of charter school funding and we've had some great charters. I don't think our district has a very long view of things and that we've discontinued some charters, uh, which I've never supported, um, so that I do hope, um, if this one does come to fruition, that we are, um, more diligent in, um, being, um, dead fast in our efforts. Um, I am going to support this because, um, I think it'll give, uh, the group a little more time, um, and some more information and I do, I love the concept. Um, I know that it's hard to support this, um, going forward when I know that the elementary is, as well as the other, um, staff members are really, um, pushed to the limit in terms of their capacity, so that is really bothersome to me. Um, but I am going to support this for right now, um, so that they can look for some more information if there is, in fact, a motion at some point. Thank you.
Thanks Renee. Um, I've not yet had a chance to weigh in and I want to, I want to piggyback on, on just two comments that I heard. And yes, there, there is a grassroots movement to do some project and project-based things are taking place, um, in the school district now, but wouldn't it, in light of how successful it is, uh, and that's for, for students who are not only doing well, but for students who aren't, wouldn't it be nice if we couldn't fan that grassroots movement into a grassfire? That's my addition. Hands over here, uh, Bob.
I'm just going to go back to what I said earlier. How can we as board members vote to spend millions of the taxpayers' dollars when we haven't even had the opportunity for the task force to bring up the information that we spent time and money on four studies and you people are going to just vote yes on opening Jackson, costing us millions of dollars when the recommendations that we might get back in the spring might be totally different? I don't know how you can look the taxpayers in the eyes and vote on this as a yes item.
What I, what I would ask, I mean, we've, and, and, well, I'm trying to be respectful, but that's the second time we've heard it, that's fine and we're going to be here for a long time. So, if we're adding something new to the discussion, let's do it, otherwise, um, I would suggest that we make a motion to move forward. So Angel, what do you have?
Two things, uh, one being, we're very accountable to our community for their taxpayers' money, but we're also accountable to them for how we educate their children. And, you know, who stands on which side of what? Obviously you stand on the financial side, I'll stand on the educational side. Not saying you're not educational and I'm not financial, but you, you gotta, you gotta decide which one weighs the most to you and it's clear where you stand and I think that's okay, that's why you're elected and you have a vote and I have a vote. Um, but I have no problem looking people in the eye. Um, the second is, when you come with something like, um, numbers, like what capacity Ben Franklin's at, it, something looks so different on paper than it does if you walk in the building and I guess, I'll, I guess I would say to you is, if you don't mind walking in the building and looking, I have three sons in that building, I have a pretty good idea what it looks like in the classrooms every day, they cannot handle 1,300 kids well. Would they do it? Absolutely. Is it a good idea? No.
Teri, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The recommendations, are these three different motions that you're looking for?
That's, it's my understanding that those are the three recommendation, recommended motions that the governance board is asking for.
For us to, if we decide to move forward. This does not mean we have the solution, we have all the information or the, uh, information to make a decision, but this, we could make these motions and move forward in whatever way that the board decided they wanted to do.
Correct. You would not be approving the contract.
Right.
Right.
So, if I, if I may?
Well, there's two of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I've been waiting for 20 minutes.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't see either of you.
You might as well go at Lisa first, I've been waiting a long time, so.
All right.
Um, I'm trying to understand what is the rush here? Why, if we have so many board members concerned about being fiscally responsible to the taxpayers in addition to providing the educational services to our students, why can't we wait until the facilities studies are completed and all the, all the data is compiled? Why the rush?
We lose a year of grant money.
Well, we'd actually lose all the grant money.
Well, no, from what I understand, we just postpone it and we would apply for the grant in a different year.
No, we lose it, period.
No, you lose it.
No, you can't.
Okay.
Grant money is gone.
Okay.
If you start the school in the second semester of next year, you would still be able to access the grant funds, but if you started in the fall of 2015, you would not have access to the grant monies.
So you wouldn't have access to the current grant monies, but we could still apply for grant funds?
I don't believe that's the case. If you started the school in the 20, in fall of 2015, the grant monies, uh, from DPI would not be there, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. But if you started second semester of, of next year, that is the 14, 15 school year, second semester, the grant monies at 85% would be there.
Okay, so the grant money that, that are linked to this grant application, we wouldn't get.
If you-
But you're also telling me that if, if we waited till the studies came in and we did a new grant application with the same amount, we couldn't get the funds?
You can't, I, I think this is correct Connie, you're in me, help me out here. It's not a matter of saying you're going to reapply for new grant monies. If, if the school opens second semester of next year, then you have access to the grant monies which you are eligible for because you received the first initial grant. But if you open the school in the fall of 2015, you would not be eligible for the grant monies that you would have been eligible for because you, because you received the initial grant.
Okay, and, and I just have to say this, because this just popped in my head, but um, a good friend of mine, husband, told her when she would shop and save 20% and save 50% and all this, well, you know what? We can't afford saving money. And, so, you know, we're getting these, these grant dollars and, um, you know, which is wonderful, but can we afford the matching part of it? So, I just had, yeah.
Go ahead, Kim.
Technically the stating, the saying was, we can't afford to save anymore.
Okay.
That's what he always told me. So, but, um, the discussion about the homeschooled, if I was listening to that, I, if I'm, if I have a parent of being homeschooled, you're almost guaranteeing that my child is going to get to that school. If you call me and say, hey, if you come to my school, you know, if you're, are you going to come to this school? So you're going to guarantee them a spot. And I didn't think that's the way these children were picked to get into the school. So that means, if you're homeschooled, you're the first one on the list. I didn't assume that's the way it was picked. However, in the discussion earlier, that's how I'm taking that discussion. You're homeschooled, because we're going to get some extra money, we're going to put you in there first. So I just want to make sure if that is true or if it's not true, because that's kind of a conflict of interest. Um, Angel, it's not that we don't like education, we're just not in the thick of the education like you are right now. You are hoping that your child possibly can be involved in this school. And super if they can, or if anybody's, you know, can, just like that Life Skill Center, you know your child, you are going to grow, your family's going to grow from that. Mine isn't, I don't have a child in there, so I can sit back and I can look at the whole picture. I'm looking at from my community, I'm looking at from my taxpayers, okay? Different way of thinking and that's why, um, you know, certain people may need to recuse themselves from certain things that are coming along the track, you know? Ms. Totten always has to recuse herself from anything to do with the teachers. Well, you got a student, if you got a child that you know is going to use that program, you need to recuse yourself, plain and simple. So, um, Teri, you used the wording, you know, um, have a fire, you know, spread that fire. Fire causes a lot of damage, you lose a lot. I had a fire that went out the whole back of my house, you lose it. You can, if you don't keep it contained, it's going to lose and I think it's going to be the taxpayers that are going to lose. We just need to wait for the studies, plain and simple. To repeat, we need to wait for the studies to come back, to be smart.
Just to clarify and, and Jen and Connie, it is a, if there are 150 applications, all 150 get in. If there are more than 150 applications, if I read the contract right, then all go into a hat and it's a lottery, it's a blind lottery.
And I understood that from the beginning, if that's what you're putting, but that's not what was stated here earlier.
No, no.
So implied, let me say it that way.
Well, no, that, actually, Kim and I, if that, if that's the way you took it, that certainly was not the way it was intended. What I asked Jen and the governance board was, could you get a handle on how many parents would commit to the school if it were to be in place? It, it wasn't a guarantee.
I know, but you sit in the audience or you sit and watch that TV. I, I can guarantee you that as parents, oh, I could do it, it's going to be a guarantee because they're going to get taxpayers' money, my name is going to be on there. Again, my opinion and I bet you a lot of people that were watching, so, thank you for clarifying that though.
I understood it the same.
Bob? I just got a, until I would like the administration, if this thing gets delayed a couple more weeks, to show us what you're going to cut, what programs you would cut and what people you'd be laying off because, as in the past, we were told, we don't have the money, correct? We don't have this million dollars and million dollars thereafter. So it's got to come out of someplace, correct?
I think the statement that Tom made at the last meeting was that if you, if you didn't use the fund balance- didn't use the fund balance and there were no other funds, for example, if there were no homeschool students that came back or open enrollment students, then you'd have to take out something from your current budget and, and put this in its place.
Right. So this is big, so we should look at that. I mean, we're talking about spending a million, well, let's find out where we're going to get the million. Because I can't see taking out of the fund balance when everything that you showed us from all the information from PM and Moody that we should leave it as it is because it's the right thing to do.
If I can ask just one question, Bob, to help that. Bill or Tom, do you know what our current fund balance is?
Well, to start the year, it's 23 million dollars. You're looking to spend, you have approved spending approximately 3.4 million of that as part of your assigned fund balance, that'll bring it down to about 19 million 500,000.
Okay.
If everything is spent.
If we look at the recommendations, folks, and let me just, let me summarize, we're going to have to take these, well, we'll take them one at a time. The first one is for the board, for a motion to approve board support for the concept and educational value of the charter school. That's first and foremost. If we don't believe in that, then there's really no reason to move on. If we move on and we do support the concept and the educational value, then there's a recommendation that the board, the charter school governance board and administration discuss and work collaboratively to problem solve in order to, in order to arrive at a funding solution for the charter school, which is what Bob and Jeff and a number of others have talked about. And the third, the third recommendation is that we commit to making a decision no later than Monday, January 27, 2014, because if, if we can't commit to do that, they have work they have to do. So we've compressed their timeline. So with that, is there a motion to approve board support for the concept and educational value of the charter school?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yep.
Ms. Schirick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Six, three.
All right. Then the second recommendation is, is the, it is recommended that the board, the charter school governance board and administration discuss and work collaboratively to problem solve in order to arrive at funding solutions for the charter school. Is there, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Can you read that again, please? And where, are you reading, did we have that in our notes?
Yeah, it's in the back of the, it's the last page of the memo, 9B1.
I, the only recommendation I have is a, is two sentences or a sentence. I don't, I don't have a list of...
There's a revised one.
There was a revised one?
Was that at our spot? I never saw it.
No, they were sent out.
By hard copy?
They were emailed, I believe.
They were emailed.
Because that's when I get my...
When? Friday morning. And they are uploaded to your Dropbox and online.
So they weren't in the packet on Thursday night when we received it. See, this is a problem with these packets, when we don't get the stuff in hand, because some of us in the public don't, yes, because some of us don't have internet service 24/7. I don't care, the technology nowadays, we don't all have it. So...
We need to get hard copies.
Can I, can I have a copy of it?
Can I also?
Because I know I was on the internet and I didn't get it, so.
And obviously, the public didn't get it either, so.
Was the revised copy posted on the website?
Absolutely.
And it was in the Dropbox also.
Yeah, but the public doesn't know to go back and look to see if things change.
I don't know if anybody read it, do you want, does anybody else want a copy of it?
No, I don't want to see it, no. I read the packet.
Exactly.
I think that's what the law is.
Read, it's a board discussion. So, do you need me to reread that to you, or are you finding it in the last page?
I'm finding it now. With the correct paperwork, it works out much better.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Schirick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries, six, three.
And then the last motion is that the board, that the board vote on the district charter school governance board contract no later than January 27, 2014.
So moved.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yep.
Ms. Schirick?
No, again.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries, five, four.
Wow.
Oh, no.
No, fails.
No, fails. Fails. One, two, three, four, five.
Five, five, four, it failed.
The four of us here said no.
And Angel said no, so it's five, four.
And Jeff. One, two, three, four. That was my mistake. Motion fails.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, we are up to D, policies. We have, I forgot to count, one, two, three, four, five, six. There are seven second readings, which we have seen before. I know I'm hoping beyond hope, but is there a motion to approve the second reading of the policies listed in the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Barb, roll call vote.
I'm sorry, but we have on page four, we still have the recordings will be disposed of 90 days after the minutes have been approved. And I, I mean, we can't be approving this until we, I mean, if we approve this now and we have the discussion about how long we should keep the meetings and all of the minutes and stuff later, then we're just going to have to come back and do it again.
On which one?
171.
So are you asking to pull 171 out of the...
Yes, until we decide.
Until we have our discussion.
Yeah, until we have our discussion on the, the length of time that we need to, yes.
All right, so then we'd be looking at a motion to approve second readings of, and I'll have to read the numbers, 141, 184, 347, 420, 421, and 453.11. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? Let's do a vote. Barb, we're pulling out 171.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Schirick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Probably won't get that lucky with first reading. How do you want to do them, folks? You want to go through them policy by policy? You want to go through them line by line? Does somebody want to try to make a motion to approve first reading?
Move to approve first reading of policy 661, 662, 664, 672.
Is there a second? Second? Discussion? Jeff?
Let's talk about 672.
All right.
Is there a reason why this, there were no alter, alterations to this policy?
I believe, can I speak?
Sure.
Okay. I believe it's because I requested that this policy be looked at by the board, and when I was informed, the administration was looking at it also, just wait and see what they have to say and then go from there.
Okay.
So we could pull this, if you wanted to.
Well, I guess I'll just speak to some of my concerns about this policy. It's not cohesive as far as what we do. There's no procedure. It's just, okay, this is what we define, a written bid, this is what we define, bid and quote. There's no A, B, C, D kind of mentality to this. It's kind of a throw the spaghetti against the wall and see what sticks, and that's how we'll write this policy. That's a concern because, you know, just in the past, however many months, five months, there have been some questions about how we do RFPs, what is the, what is our policy in RFPs? When is the superintendent required to notify us, you know, when he does things that are under $20,000? Those kinds of questions, you know, my experience on the county board, I like some of the policies that they do. If we take maybe a look at that and some of the recommendations out of there, not saying that they have it right 100% or they have it wrong 100%, but it'll give us a good idea. Their budget is pretty much the same as ours, $100 million. I just, I want some consistency on how we deal with those issues. Again, everybody professes that we need to be good stewards of our dollars. Some of these things, written bids, quotations, I like to see the words contracts, written contracts, final contracts, that kind of language also added in there because, you know, at the end of the day, when we're told the max dollar of this project is going to be $672,000, and if it's 673, now we got an issue, and it's addressed by our policy. That's what I would like to see on this. I don't have specific recommendations at this time, but that's what I'm looking for.
And I would agree with that. And can we see a copy of the counties? Can we get that with our...
It's online.
Okay.
It is.
I would ask that, that Jeff, do give us specifics. You mentioned written contracts and contracts and that kind of thing. We have in the revisions that we're making, there is much of what you indicated, we're along the same lines of thinking, that, that it wasn't systematic enough and it didn't show some of that, some of that procedures. But if there are specific suggestions, we'd like to have those ahead of time. Since our board meeting is a week from today, we could try to bring back something on the 16th, or we could wait till January, it depends on what the board would like to do, but if we're going to get the suggestions, we need them in the next couple of days.
Are we okay with it, with the January, in light of the fact that our next meeting will be, a week from now, we'll be three hours into it? Okay. All right. We can pull, we can pull 672 out where there, where there are other, and we'll bring that back in January with the recommendations.
With some suggestions, specific suggestions, okay? And we'll get a copy of the county policy out to everybody.
Do I need to amend or withdraw my motion?
I don't know. Where are we, as far as are there others? In either 661-1, 662-1, or 664? Any other? Why don't you, why don't you amend your motion to remove 672?
I amend my motion to remove 672.
And I'll amend my second.
All right. Barb, let's do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively? Ms. Shively?
That's you, Renee.
Hello?
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Said yes.
We couldn't hear you, Renee, sorry.
Okay.
All right. So now, is there a motion to approve the first reading as previously stated, less 672?
So moved.
Well, it's already been.
Oh, yeah.
I believe it's already been and moved and seconded, so roll call a vote on the original motion, please.
Sure.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. That's one of the fastest first and second reading policies we've been through.
And meetings. Shh, sorry.
We're not done yet. All right, moving on to item 9E, approval of future agenda items. We have two items for closed session, contracts with cabinet director and for closed session contract of superintendent. Jeff, any comments you wish to make?
As a board member, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure we pay what's owed, nothing more, nothing less. On item B, I would encourage you to live up to that oath. On item A, actually, contracts, it should read contracts for cabinet directors, because there's two contracts now that are in question.
So Jeff, are you, do you want to take these separately, or do you want to do them together? What do you want to do?
Separately.
All right. Is there a motion to approve for closed session contracts of cabinet directors, plural?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, Barb, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Schirick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven two.
Carrie, could you please speak more into the mic? I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
Sure. And then is there a motion to approve for closed session contract of superintendent?
So moved.
Seconded, Shively.
Discussion?
I have discussion.
Yes, Angel.
I'm wondering, Jeff, if it's because of what we set up with Mr. Feinauer, if it's possible that we can do this with a facilitator? If it's, I mean, we're talking about the same thing?
Totally different issue. This is a legal issue.
Okay.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shierick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item E2, disposition of closed session minutes tapes. And that is a possible action item. Angel.
I had the, all the information that there is included in your packet. It's just what the laws are, what the state statutes are, and just asking if people want to keep tapes or not. The seven-year thing looks like it was not necessarily for this, for our board meeting. Everything's up for interpretation, I guess, as always. So whatever happens at this vote, I promise I will never bring it up again.
So what are you asking for?
That we keep them.
Okay, I'll second that motion, that we keep the tapes.
That we keep them back to the seven-year?
Right.
Or whatever.
Indefinitely.
Oh, and just to be clear, we're talking about closed session.
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Closed session minutes.
Could I ask a clarification here?
Reading through the information is what I had understood originally. And if I understand correctly, Gwen was still our board secretary. She took, she had the board tapes and did those for the purposes of the minutes, which should have fallen under the 90 days, so those should have been destroyed. Then the board decided not to have the board secretary in the office, in the closed session. So then the clerk, which is Jeff Presley, was taking the minutes, and perhaps Jen prior to that. And those, then, the board asked that the tapes be kept. So during that period of time, it would have fallen under the seven years. Now we have Barb, the secretary, back in closed session, taping for the purposes of the minutes. So I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'm asking that the tape be kept anyway for the purpose of hearing what the discussion was and where the conclusions came from.
Okay. I will tell you that talking to WASB, when I have been at meetings, they have sought me out, they are following this district, they think that is so ill-advised to do that. I will not be supporting this.
Is there other discussion? Bob?
I just have to agree with Angel that we need something for history. This board could be changing over every spring, three or four new board members, and there might be questions or some, something that was addressed. We need history, so I'll fully support this.
Kim, did I see a hand?
Yep. I guess for Renee, and I know you probably can easily hear me, why is it, why are they ill-advised to hold on to them?
Because when you, when you tape closed session meetings, remember that I think our district has a lot of closed sessions, probably more than we should.
Yep.
You go into closed sessions for very specific things. Your minutes should reflect the motions that are made and the seconds, and then the voting either takes place in closed session or open session. And really, that's all you should be recording. When you keep the minutes, then anyone can ask for those meeting tapes. Then the district has the responsibility to have those all transcribed, and then someone has to lift them over to take out any information that would, you know, remove someone's confidentiality or whatever. And it just kind of defeats the whole purpose for the closed session, and you really shouldn't be going into closed session to discuss things other than just to make decisions that you're covered under the state statutes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I got something else to follow up on. I mean, my question is, is because things are said and are interpreted or implied differently, and misinformation is given out, in my eyes, sometimes on a regular basis, to go back on those might be a good thing. So if there is a lawsuit, not saying that we can pick out people to do it, but if we are giving the wrong information, and that's what we're voting on, we at least, at least for me, I can say, okay, this is the information I voted on. What was given to me is incorrect or correct. At least then I can at least hold my head up with, with my vote. That's the only reason why I would be voting this, is so we could go back and listen to the information that was given to us at the time of the vote.
Jeff, I saw your hand first.
One of the future items, keep in mind, is some year, maybe hopefully this board will decide that we want to have discussions with our superintendent in closed session on his evaluation and performance. Those conversations, if you vote yes on this, will be taped, and they will be discoverable. So whatever you say in that closed session could be discoverable in some type of court proceeding. That's why WASB, and I talked to one of the attorneys there, says, I don't know why you guys are doing it. Don't understand why that you would want to keep those tapes, especially, I mean, think about it. If you're at a private employer, do they record your conversation when you're doing your evaluation? They don't. It's all, you know, here's a summary of it, you either agree or disagree kind of thing. That's one of my main concerns of why I would not vote for this. The second one is, you know, just, that's why closed sessions are there. I would agree, we go into closed sessions more than we should. We just need to be good record keepers. Hopefully, the closed sessions will be at earlier hours, and then we can all remember what happened in them, so.
Chris?
Just from a historical background, there have been a number of times, even recently, when information needed to be looked at. Just to have a vote on specific information does not give you reason, history, or anything else. Boards change every few years. And I can tell you, if you say something in closed session that's liable, it's still liable. It's still liable. So I would caution people not to have a history. In this district, in the last 12 years, I have been with presidents, including Renee, who have had to go back to figure out, as we changed boards, changed superintendents, the information. It's not just about a vote. That's like saying, for me, and I understand the concerns, I really do understand the concerns, but it's like saying, well, this person was murdered.
No, don't worry, don't have to.
Yeah? What happened? Were they robbing somebody's house? I mean, without an explanation, without the history of what ensued, it's not, just a vote is not giving us information. And we may need it. And I know we would be protected, we would have to redact some of the information, but I'm absolutely going to support it.
Lisa?
Again, when this first came up, I brought up the whole legal, that we shouldn't be doing it, and, you know, whatever, no one listened to me then, which I still find quite comical. But on another note, if we chose not to retain the tapes, but have more complete notes, minutes, would that not resolve the issue? I mean, because what I'm hearing is that the minutes that have been taken in the past have not been clear enough for us to understand what we meant by it. So based on that, I will, you know, if we change the way we take our minutes, I will support not keeping these for liability purposes. But if we're not going to change the way we keep our minutes, there is nothing. We don't have anything. So I don't know if we can amend the motion to incorporate more complete minutes.
Barb, what's the, what's the motion we have?
The motion right now is to keep all tape recordings of closed sessions.
Indefinitely?
Yes.
Indefinitely.
That's forever.
That's what I heard her say.
Can I make one other comment? And Lisa, this is really directed at something you said. When Dwight Stevens was board president, we had, we had more complete information, and statements were made, and they were taken to Dr. Stevens, a complaint from board members because they did not like what was stated in that meeting. And he had been president for eight or nine years, and he had always had those tapes. And after that, he brought it forward and said, no more. So if you don't like what's in those, that explanation, or those minutes, that, those extra minutes, or those more detailed minutes that are given, then we go back and change them and keep doing that until everybody's happy with what's, if you've got a recording of it, you don't have to make excuses. You don't, you know, it isn't reflective of anyone in particular, it's of the actions that have happened.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Barb, roll call vote, please.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Carrie, your role is really to re, do, you know, to summarize and to give us the motion again, and who moved and seconded it. I didn't hear a second.
I seconded it.
That was Bob.
You know, I can't tell. It's just really, it would be helpful if that would occur with the motion, please.
Barb, can you read back the motion? Because I don't remember who moved and seconded, so.
It was moved and seconded, I'm on the wrong page, by Faxon Larson, that we keep all tape recordings of closed sessions indefinitely.
Carrie, you have a hand up.
And who's custodian? Who's going to keep those?
Superintendent.
Because when we're having closed sessions on contracts and evaluations, I mean, I was not in my manager's and my boss's evaluation about me. I mean, I came after the fact. I didn't know what they said. So there are certain ones in closed session, just like what Jeff said, that, because am I afraid I'm going to be sued because I say my opinion? You betcha. My opinion should not get me sued. A statement that I make, if it is a slander, yes. If, there's a difference, my opinion, your opinion, how it's, how it's taken. And that's the same thing, you know, regardless if it's written down or it's verbal, he said, she said, you know. So that would be my next question, is who's custodian? I don't think the superintendent should have any closed session tapes in his hand. It should be the board president, or, you know, or the board president or the board secretary needs to have them locked away. However, every year, you could be moving those tapes.
Well, the fact is that the tapes, Kim, right now are kept in the board secretary's office, to which I don't have a key. Just as a point of ethics, I would never listen to a tape which I was not part of closed session, especially not in my evaluation, and the board secretary wouldn't give it to me anyway. I'm officially the custodian of the records, but in, there's a case where it just wouldn't happen. Now, if you wanted to be specific in board policy, because you want to have it explicitly stated, you certainly could do that. That the board president is the custodian of records involving discussions about the superintendent when the superintendent is not in closed session. That's perfectly legitimate.
And so that we're clear, I don't have a key to the secretary's office, nor do I want one.
Well, and it's different now, that the secretary is not, it's supposed, she's supposed to be our secretary, not his during the day and then ours at night. It's, it's different. I can only hope that whoever secretary we have, we can trust her with the key. And, and don't take this the wrong way, but if you wanted to get into, yes, you could. It's the ethic issue.
I can't. I don't have a key to that office. There's only one.
Well, there's a custodian that does. So.
I don't.
Well, there's got to be a custodian that would have it. So anyways, you know, that would just be the, the fact of it. I, you know, there's, this can go both ways with this. Should we keep them? Should we not keep them?
Do you want to amend it?
I think the motion needs to be.
You can add an amendment.
I can, or you have to?
I don't have to, right? We just vote on an amendment separately.
Yeah. Yeah, you can make an amendment, and then we vote on that separately.
So the amendment, if I'm saying this right, would be to have the board secretary be custodian of all closed session recorded minutes, if the first one passes, and kept separately closed session minutes regarding the superintendent's evaluation or contract when he's not in the meeting?
Can you state that again?
No. Listen to the recording. No, I'm kidding. That the board secretary would be custodian of all closed session minutes, recorded minutes, and any recordings based on the superintendent's evaluation or contract is completely separate, stored separate, locked separate, however you want to put that, when he is not in the room.
Or she.
Or she, yes, correct.
Can I ask a clarification? Did you say all closed session minutes would be under Barb, the secretary?
The secretary.
Nowhere in the state is the superintendent not, and I actually called to make sure, not the custodian of the records.
He just said that they're in Barb's, Barb's office, didn't he?
They're in Barb's office, but the policy reads that the superintendent is the custodian of the district records.
And I called to find out, were there any, and they said they had never heard of a district. Now, if you have a concern about the ones that don't, that have his evaluation or he's not in, that's different. But I want that, you're clarifying that you want them all under Barb.
Well, yeah, because that's what the amendment was requested, yes, yeah. Well, uh-huh. Well, because he stated that they were all in her office already.
They were in her office, but that doesn't make her the custodian.
But you don't have a key.
I don't have a key.
You don't have a key, so you can't get at them unless she's there.
Correct.
So then you would still remain the custodian?
Except for any exception that you make as a board.
Okay, so we would be changing the custodianship of those.
If Kim's, if Kim's motion is passed, you would change the custodian of the closed session minutes records.
Tapes. Recordings, yeah, recordings.
There's been a motion. Is there a second? I'm sorry, there's been a proposed amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I wish she would have said that prior. You know, the closed session, he's in there anyways, he's giving his opinion, he's giving his evaluation. Maybe I will take the amendment. Sorry, Barb, just to the latter part of it, that this secretary is the custodian of any recordings, closed session recordings, when the superintendent is not in the room during the meetings regarding his evaluation or contract. So the first part, I'm leaving out, that he is not the custodian of the closed session ones. I don't know the history with that, but just that he would not be the custodian of the ones that are regarding his evaluation. However, I don't like the entirety, I, you know, we don't keep anything for entirety, the tapes don't even last. You know, it's a seven-year itch that you do everything else, so.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Any further discussion? Barb, a roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Mr. Evil? Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
I need you to read it.
The amendment is to have the board secretary be custodian of closed sessions recorded minutes of any meeting where the superintendent is not in the room at the, during the meeting.
Yeah.
She answered you, Barb, she answered.
Okay. Ms. Shierick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven two.
All right, the original motion, can you read that back to us, please? Which was Angel, seconded by Bob.
Moved and seconded, to keep all tape recordings of closed sessions indefinitely, and that the board secretary would be custodian of all closed session recorded minutes when the superintendent is not in the room during the meetings.
We just approved the amendment part, so what we're doing is...
Doing the keeping them.
For indefinitely, okay? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
No.
Ms. Shierick?
The word indefinitely just throws me, I'm going to say no.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion fails.
Could I make another motion?
To a jury? Sure.
No, no, not to a jury.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the tapes be kept for seven years with the, along with the amendment.
I'll second that.
Well, we've already, we, we...
We did the amendment.
We did the amendment, right?
Correct.
And that passed, okay. So then just that we keep the tapes for seven years?
Correct.
For closed session?
No.
If the amendment passed, but the motion failed...
Well, thing's out.
And everything's out.
Make a motion.
But it's okay for you to say it the way you did.
Okay.
And with the amendment.
Yeah, but I'm... Yeah, but I'm going to take that away. So I would make a motion that we would keep the closed-session recordings for seven years.
And nothing about the custodianship.
That was a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think we've discussed it, so let's try a roll call vote.
Can you again repeat what the motion was for first in?
Yes, this is Chris, and I made the motion to keep the closed-session recordings for seven years. And Bob seconded it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would like to amend it again. The same amendment I had in previously. Thank you.
Second. Do you want to read back the amendment for everybody?
The amendment is that the board secretary be custodian of all closed-session recorded minutes when the superintendent is not in the room during the meeting.
Barb, let's do a roll call vote.
Are we voting on the whole thing or just the amendment?
Just the amendment.
Vote on the amendment first and then the motion.
Okay. Why couldn't you just put that with your motion?
Because I'm not voting for the amendment.
Okay.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Larson.
No.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
No.
Ms. Shively.
Yeah.
Ms. Shierick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Mr. Evil.
No.
Mr. Rothman.
Yes.
All right, now, the amendment, or the original motion, is Chris, seconded by Bob, to retain closed-session tapes for seven years. Let's try a roll call vote.
Before you do...before you do that, Sarah did some research on this that maybe you just want to repeat it so I don't get it wrong.
I had some conversations with folks and gave Angel some of that initial research, and I would...
I can't hear.
Okay, Sarah, could you come up here? Thanks.
Sorry, Renee. I did some of the initial research for Angel on the issue, and I would be concerned that once you keep a record for seven years, that it would be considered a permanent record versus if you keep it for 90 days and then get rid of it. I just don't want you to get into a situation where you're keeping them for seven years and then getting rid of them, and then someone comes back and says, you had them for this amount of time, they are considered a permanent record, and they're...the statutes are just real touchy with minutes in particular of how we keep them and how we don't keep them.
So are you saying, Sarah, that if the board keeps the closed-session minutes, the tapes, for seven years, they're considered a permanent record?
I don't know that for sure, but I would be very cautious about if you're going to...my recommendation, which nobody cares what I think, but would be if you're going to keep them, keep them, and if you're not...if you're just going to use them for minutes, do them just for minutes. That seven years makes me nervous.
Yeah, but that's a state statute.
The seven years for minutes isn't. The...for minutes, it's stated as minutes are a permanent record. So my concern would just be that if you have them for seven years, that someone could come back and say that they were a permanent record at that point.
So then my question would be, what Angel recommended would be indefinitely...
Would be in line with how we keep minutes now. So what...I think the determination would be, do you consider these to be part of your permanent record of your minutes, or are you using them just so that Barb or whoever can, you know, put whatever you want in those minutes? You know, if you just want them to be motions and actions, or if you want them to be...to serve as part of that permanent record for reference for history, for that kind of stuff.
Can I ask a question?
Is it just a seven year? I mean, could you go two years and it's still not considered?
I don't know. I ju...I don't. And I'm not a...you know, I didn't go to law school. But when I looked over the stuff for Angel, that was...
That's something that's stuck in you, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because two years is plenty enough time. If you forget something, you usually kind of can go back already. After two years, really, the world has changed so much, but seven years, I can see that. I mean, most states, it's common law marriage, so... But thank you for that.
Well...
So it would be in the entirety, and we'd just be repeating the same.
All right, where are we, Barb? What is...
We're at the main motion to keep the tapes for seven years and have the board secretary be custodian.
Custodian...
Of the closed sessions.
When the superintendent is not...
When the superintendent's not in the room.
Got it. All right. And that was moved by Chris, seconded by...
Bob.
Bob. Can we do a roll call vote on that one, please?
Sure. Mr. Larson.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
No.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Ms. Shively.
No.
Ms. Shierick. Ms. Totten.
No.
Mr. Evil.
No.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Rothman.
No.
Motion is defeated. 6-3.
Can I make a motion?
Why not?
To add...
I'm admitting it.
To add the custodian part of our policy 171. With the wording added, when he's not in the room, I mean, there might be possibly some minutes, meetings, that he wouldn't be there, you know, just because of family obligation or something like that, but maybe putting it in there regarding his evaluation as contract and contract versus when he's not in the room because it...
Do you need to make a motion, or can we just add it? Are we on first readings?
I think we're on second reading, but it's coming back after we had this discussion, so...
Well, this is a first, yeah.
But it needs to...
Yeah.
But no, that's absolutely legitimate.
If I make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, but I'm not sure what it is that we're moving and seconding, so...
Barb, do you know?
I think so.
Okay, let me see.
It was moved and seconded, Shierick, Totten, that the custodian policy that we just referred to be added to policy 171 as it pertains to evaluation and contract. So that would have to come back to...
Yep, no, come back.
The eighth, second reading.
So the custodian of the recorded minutes will be with the secretary.
That whole thing, yeah.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure, because I don't know if, you know, Renee...we don't want to piecemeal it for Renee, so...or for any of us, technically.
All right, and you're proposing that that come back to one...under 171?
Correct, that's where we're right now.
Correct.
Okay.
Not quite su...quite sure where, but I'm not English.
Well, I think it's approved. We can figure out where. All right. I think we all understand the...
Isn't this off the topic?
Pardon me?
Isn't this off the topic of what...really what it says on the agenda for possible action is really just taping out the meeting minutes? I think we're off topic. Now you're talking about custodians.
You are correct, Renee.
Okay, then I'll bring it back when we bring 171 back.
Okay.
I think that would be a better move.
Thank you, Renee.
You're welcome.
You remember, you're sitting in the Lazy Boy with your feet up.
I wish.
I think she'd rather be here.
I know. I just...
All right, item E4, Glenn, you wish to speak to that. Pat, is he still here?
Aren't we doing...are we not doing them?
Do we miss board comments?
Angel? Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake, but thanks, Pat. Board comments, Angel.
I brought this back just to have consistency. Do we want...these are the three options that I saw that we had struggled with in the past. Do we want you to have it in by a certain time that you want to make a comment? I think right now we just kind of recommend you have it in by noon the day of the agenda setting meeting. Do you have to give what your topic is? And can we just do spontaneous board comments? Like that night, can someone just say, I'd like to make...I'd like to be on board comments? I just put this on here for discussion, because we have not had a consistent way of handling it.
When I look at the presentation information, and we have the Student Senate Report, and we have the WSB Legislative Report and Superintendent Report, they're all, you know, not really specific. So to me, it would make sense that board comments is just there, and if you want to make a comment that night, you know, you make a comment.
I agree with that.
Like, we don't even say anything about it? We just have it there?
Yep, that works.
Yeah. I mean, I don't understand why we would be stricter on ourselves than on the rest.
Maybe to get around it, just a suggestion is just to...I noticed that with this meeting, we just listed board members. Maybe if you put board member comments, and you just list all the board members' names, then it opens it up so anyone can speak.
Excellent idea, Renee.
One of the...one of the things, and I know you'd mentioned a policy, Lisa, on this, years back, there was not an avenue for board members to...suggested items to be put on an agenda. One of the things that we did was if a board member attended a meeting, or they had something they wanted to share with the board, it was not for discussion. You could ask for clarification, because one of the concerns is if you start discussing something that's not on an agenda as an agenda item, you're discussing business. So it was really meant for board members to share some sort of information, maybe concerns or something like that, but we never had the other item, which when Renee was president, she put on there, possible board items. So I would be very cautious. I don't have any problem with board members putting a comment on or giving their comment or information, but if you start having a discussion back and forth other than clarification, someone's up speaking and that, you're starting a discussion and you're really doing board business without it being listed as an agenda item. So I don't have any problem with, you know, board members, if they want to make a comment and not putting that what's on there.
Right, and I'm of the...I'm of the same belief, but it's...I think Chris makes a very valid point. We can ask clarifying questions, but let's say that Chris brings up a topic, we can't have the debate because it's not an agenda item, so...
That would be my only concern.
Any other questions or any other discussion? Barb, roll call vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I apologize. My question, I think, is null and void. If the decision was to put everybody's name on there, was that the decision then? And then you could pass if you wanted to? Or were you going to leave it open? I guess what was that final decision?
Well, rather than take...
There isn't a motion.
Okay.
You can make it.
Well, and I'll just throw this out. Rather than take up a quarter of a page by listing everybody's name, when it gets to board comments, we can just...we can go around the table.
Well, if you put the names, you don't have to list them. You could just list them in order. You wouldn't have to list them on 2, 3, 4. You could just board comments and just list the people's names.
Yeah, like in a straight line, it only take a line, but...
What?
But it'd be no...there would be no discussion, just the board person could speak their piece. Board members listen, but there'd be no open-up discussion. That's fine.
Correct.
I'm good with that, and I didn't necessarily need a motion passed. I just wanted to have the conversation, so...
Do we have to pass a motion, because it's...
If there's consensus, it has to be recorded as a formal consensus of the board.
So then we need an action or a motion.
So on the board comments, we'll list the names in some order, across a line, and then people can choose to pass if they wish. Does that work with everybody?
Yep.
That works, and I would probably use a revolving, just like Barb does with her votes, use a revolving thing, so the same person's not always at the end.
Renee, are you okay with that?
I'm perfect with that. Sounds like a great idea.
Sounds like we have consensus. Thanks, Angel. Glenn was not feeling well and needed to leave, so he's not here to speak to four. Staff morale plan is an action item. Angel.
I kind of just put this on there, because it was in the morale plan, as part of the morale plan, to have a lively discussion about the morale plan. I am not prepared to say anything brilliant. I didn't know if people wanted to have a conversation about it, if it's just going through. I know it was just part of the evaluation, and it just stood as is. Do we want to have a lively conversation about the morale plan? Do we want to leave the morale plan alone? Do we want an update on the morale plan? I kind of put this on here again as a conversation item.
To be honest with you, I don't know where we are with the morale plan. We got the white sheet, whatever that was called, and it was not up to my opinion of what we should be doing with it. So I would say to bring it back and see where we're at, and I don't know where we're at with it.
I gave the board an update about the staff morale plan two meetings ago as part of the superintendent's report. I don't have anything with me tonight, because I didn't know what was going to be discussed.
Lisa?
For me, the update wasn't a complete update. I was under the understanding in the evaluation that a morale plan was to be established, and the board was going to look at that. One of the items that keeps being brought up, spending more time in the schools and more and more, when we have three groups that have done a vote of no confidence, and then you put yourself in their face, I'm not really sure how that relates to a morale plan. So I guess I would like to have a very lively debate on this, and I think we may want to go in a closed session for it. If you want to have it in an open session, I'm fine with that, too, but I think that the board had genuinely thought that after all the information we received, that we definitely have a morale issue in this district. And like I said, the plan that was submitted, I don't believe that it built up any, other than having a lot of to-dos on there, it wasn't really increasing staff morale.
Renee?
I would...I would like to see it brought back. It was my understanding in the evaluation, we asked, and tell Louise, commented that he did a great job reaching out to the public. We were interested in having him reach in, and that I thought we'd have more dialogue about it. So I'd love to have it come back to the board so we could have a discussion. Maybe there's ideas that people would like, and perhaps some staff has some input into it as well, because really, our overall goal is to have our employees engaged and valued and involved in the process of education.
Thanks, Renee. Others, Chris?
Yeah. The board charged the superintendent to come back to us with a morale plan. That was his charge, and that's what he did. And that's what he's been doing with that morale plan. Now, if you're going to bring back the morale plan, then it becomes the board's adaptation of what we've asked him to do. The other concern is this. If you're concerned about the morale of the employees of this district, this board has a big employee here, and that is the superintendent. There's nothing in there at all, because this was directed for the staff who work under the superintendent. You want to do a morale plan? Because I have a list of about 200 things for our employee, and some of them happened at this meeting tonight regarding our employees' morale, and I don't think it's anything that anyone here would do to any one of our other employees in this district. So if you want to come back with a different morale plan, we better have a big piece of that that directly affects our major employee, which is the superintendent.
I'm not sure I'm following you, Chris.
I'm saying he is one of our employees, and I believe if there's a...
He's also an employee because the board...
No, actually, Barb Portson is also. And I've been corrected on that. That's why I'm mentioning it.
Well, I think that on one of the items tonight, we are going to talk about being able to talk with our employees, which we haven't been able to do.
Right.
Any other...any other comments?
I think this is an issue that really does border some, I don't know what it borders, but it's very incongruent to me.
Angela, can you speak, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Renee. The Board charged me with developing a staff morale plan, which I did do in a very timely way. I have been proceeding with that staff morale plan. I gave the Board a detailed update to that plan about what we were doing, in addition to some items that were not on there, that we are doing. And if the Board now wants to have staff input into that morale plan, if the Board wants to direct that morale plan, then it's no longer my goal. It becomes the district's goal, and the district Board's. And then I would go back and question the evaluation process, and there have been some things said tonight that were discussed in closed session that shouldn't have been said in open session, particularly about this issue. So, if the Board wants to revisit this item as part of the superintendent's evaluation, it should probably do so in closed session. But I've been proceeding, implementing that staff morale plan that I gave you.
And I'll add one additional comment. As I recall, when the staff morale plan was originally presented, that document asked for input from the Board. There was reluctance from the Board to do it, because it did not say action item. However, as I shared that night back in October, and I will again tonight, I've been through the plan, and I've shared my thoughts with the superintendent, and if there are people that have, that think there are things that should be added or incorporated, then I'd have that conversation with him.
Well, I guess I'd take issue with that, Terry, because it was on the agenda, and we did discuss it, but it wasn't properly posted. And I did give some feedback, at least my feedback. I thought that many of the things that were listed as part of the morale plan were not, I didn't agree with them. So, you know, I don't really care what you do. I would ask one question, though, since this is a goal for the superintendent. How are we going to evaluate whether or not it was effective?
Well, I'd have to go back, Renee, to the morale plan, which I don't have in front of me, and give you the metrics.
Yeah, I would like that, because I don't really see, I didn't see anything in there that was really measurable. What I saw was something that had a whole list of things that you were asking other people to do, otherwise it couldn't be successful.
There were two parts to it. One was a white paper, which I explained before, which was to try to stimulate people to think about morale differently than the responsibility of one person for 1,000 employees. And the second part was a very specific list of activities, which was the action plan to build staff morale, and I have added to that since. So, there was two separate parts. I had specifically asked that the Board be involved in raising staff morale. There were items listed at the bottom of that. I don't remember exactly what they were offhand, and-
Yeah, the behaviors that you were asking, you know, everyone had to agree with this, had to do that, had to-
No, that-
I don't know how you implement some-
Renee, that, what you're referring to was the white paper, not the actual staff morale plan. And if I could-
I apologize for having it in front of me.
Yeah, if I could just finish. And I'm proceeding down that. That was a directive from the Board to the superintendent, as part of his evaluation, to present a staff morale plan, and I did that. I asked for Board input. In my mind, it was never intended to be an action part of the Board. You directed me to do that. That was your action. That was part of the evaluation, and that's what I'm doing. I don't know how the Board can now come back and say, "Well, we don't approve of that." You've directed me to do that. If, at the end of the year, you don't think that that goal was met, then it seems to me that's the point at which the Board evaluates the superintendent.
Well, that's the problem with this whole thing, is because I had serious concerns. I begged and pleaded for Terry to have us be able to talk to you before we even voted to renew your contract, because I saw a real problem with the internal morale. I called Board members. I asked them if we could have a special session. I did everything I could, and that was not accomplished before we decided whether or not to renew. I begged and pleaded to do it since then, and now it's December, and now you're saying, you know, "We can't do this." So, I think it's kind of tragic for a Board, whose major mission of this district is to prepare each student to be successful, and in order to do that, you have to have an engaged and motivated staff, and we have no input into this. So, that's fine if you don't want to take any action, but I'm just going to articulate my real dis taste for this process of having things come before the agenda, and the way in which this kind of gets manipulated, because everybody loses.
Jeff?
I guess I'm a little confused of how it works, maybe in the public sector, that it's different from the private. While I can set my goals, doesn't mean my employer has to accept my goals, first of all, but secondly, the process that I go to achieve those goals, again, is not up to me. It is up to my employer. Now, maybe it's different in the public sector that I'm missing it, but the Board never had the opportunity to go back and readdress that specific goal that it thought was important. Again, maybe I'm just confused.
I thought what occurred was that I walked into the room. I was given three areas, one of which was to develop a staff morale plan, and that's what I was directed to do. When, and I don't remember the timing of this, but somebody suggested it be an action plan at the Board level. That was not what I was directed. That was not my understanding when the Board met for the evaluation. It was, here's a directive, develop a staff morale plan, and go forward. It just, it seems a little, I don't know, it seems a little strange to me that at some point, somebody wanted to bring it back, because, I don't know.
Chris?
I just would like to ask a question. Does, do you think anyone on this Board knows what the white paper was?
I don't. From the discussion, I can't, I don't know.
No.
I really don't know.
I just wanted to ask that for clarification.
I know what the white paper was, and I didn't agree with it. I would have loved to have, had to have a discussion about it.
Okay. Well, maybe hindsight. If we had said, one of the goals is, "We'd like to work with you on a morale plan," perhaps it would have been different. Instead of you come up with one, again, maybe it's an understanding of, "The Board would like to work with you on a staff morale plan. We're very concerned about it. How can we do that process?" So, perhaps it's in the understanding. I don't know.
What is the wish of the group? Is there a motion? There has been no motion.
Well, I'm going to try to do this again, Barb. Hopefully, I'll get better with it at, with my age, I guess. I want to make a motion to bring the staff morale plan back and work on it jointly with the Board.
I'll second that.
Is there further discussion?
Only, do you want that in closed or open session?
I'm not sure legally you can do a morale plan in closed session.
It was part of my evaluation. It was a directive of my evaluation that-
But the morale plan itself, we're not doing your evaluation at this time. We're evaluating the morale plan.
Well, you certainly are. Renee made comments already that were evaluative in nature.
That's number five. And that's when Renee said that we'll be discussing that later.
No, no, no. She made, she made comments about the morale plan. She made a val-
I said I didn't like the white paper.
Didn't like the white paper, and she-
Maybe you think I apologize.
And she said she thought that the-
I intend to make any evaluative comments, and if I did so, I apologize.
Well, the comments were also made about the activities were just a to-do list, so I think we need to get some clarity about whether or not it can be discussed in open or closed, since it was part of an evaluation.
But it was also presented to the public already in the Board packet, so it's already out there as a-
I don't disagree with that. I think that the discussion could easily go into an evaluative area, when you talk about the things that I have already done.
And I would agree with that, that it could cross that line, but if we are very clear that we are not to cross that line, that the staff morale plan in and of itself is what's being discussed, not the performance and evaluation of the superintendent. I do not believe that can go into closed session.
I think we need clarification.
Well, what if we did move on to item five, which is the monthly performance evaluation conference with the superintendent, and perhaps the Board could speak and talk about the staff morale, morale plan with the superintendent?
Well, we have a motion in a second on the floor right now.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Yep. The motion was to bring the staff morale plan back with the Board's input. I said nothing about connecting it with the evaluation, just seeing where it's at, what we suggest where it should go. Again, nothing about the evaluation.
I guess I, I won't support it. I just do it with the evaluation, because I don't want to get anybody in trouble.
So, you believe it should be in closed session?
Yes.
I don't have a-
It's been discussed recently. I just don't want to, I don't want to create any problems for anyone, but I do want to discuss it as part of the evaluation conference.
Well, I guess we could bring it back after the value, if we get to the evaluation, then we could always bring it back and bring it forward, so I guess-
Well, no, wait a minute, but you have, there's been a motion-
Yes, I meant, my motion is on there, yeah.
So, are we, are you withdrawing? Or are we voting to bring the staff morale plan back for Board discussion and input in open?
If we can do it in open, I would love it in open, because I hate closed session.
Get in your stance. My second stance.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, that we will bring the staff morale plan back for Board input and discussion in open session. Jeff?
Just to clarify, this has nothing to do with performance, then?
No.
Correct.
Talking about a-
Correct. Barb, a roll call vote, please.
Sorry, Terry, can I ask one question?
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Kim, do you want someone to prepare something about that conversation, or do you just want to have the conversation?
Well, we will have to have the white paper and his plan that he had presented. I mean, I know I probably could go back in my minutes and try to find it, but I would say that we'd have to start with there, and everybody would bring their suggestions forward or whatever. And maybe an update with it, too, where he's at with it, so.
Barb, a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Yes, that was a yes.
That was a yes. Ms. Shurek?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion carries.
Item five, monthly performance/evaluation conferences with the superintendent. Jeff?
Well, it's been before you, I don't know how many times. We're already halfway through the school year, so we're a little behind the eight ball, I guess, if we're going to have these conversations, because it's already been kicked down the can three months. So, theoretically, this isn't going to make the agenda until January or February, so maybe by March, we'll be able to actually do this. But it's really up to this Board. At the end of the day, either you want to do it, or you don't. And if you don't, this Board will never move forward. I hate to say that, but this Board, overall, will not move forward, because there are a lot of discussions that need to be had as a Board, and as a Board and the superintendent. And this is the only way that it can happen. Now, I know what's probably going to come out is, well, we've got to wait for our mediator, so to speak, to put this together, so we can talk about it, but that got kicked down the road until almost to the end of January. It's up to you. You guys decide what you want to do.
Jeff, can you make a motion, please?
Move-
If you want us to-
Yes.
On something?
Move to have on the next agenda, for the next regularly scheduled meeting, monthly evaluation and performance conference, the first one that we should have is without the superintendent, the following next regularly scheduled meeting, we will have that conference with the superintendent. And this will go on monthly-
Not needed.
Until the Board decides otherwise.
I'll second it.
So, can I ask a clarifying question? Does that mean that that actually starts in January, or you're bringing it to the Board in December 16th for the Board to decide if that's what they want to do?
I think the Board can decide tonight, the way it's posted.
Yes.
Yeah.
Terry, you got a hand?
So, Jeff, are you saying that on the 16th, there would be a closed session for the Board?
Correct.
Okay.
Couple of things. Jeff, do you get a monthly evaluation every month?
No, actually, every two weeks.
Oh, every two?
I can't, I-
Sorry, Bob.
Take it my monthly.
Every two weeks, Bob. I meet with my boss for an hour to talk about my evaluation and performance. My company feels it's very important that, number one, I know as an employee of what I'm doing, but number two, as an opportunity for them to express their expectations. They don't wait until the six-month or the yearly evaluation. They feel it's important to get business done in a timely fashion. That's just how we do it in the private sector.
Well, you must have a different private sector than I came from, because I usually had a six-month evaluation, and how I was progressing in my goals, that we mutually agreed upon, and then I'd have a yearly, another six months, I'd have my complete year-end, okay? Everybody has a copy. I got this off the Internet. It's the Ohio Superintendent Evaluation System, which I think is something that we need to look at, because there are some good points in here. But I just looked at the baseline that they have on here for the superintendent evaluation, and it's page seven, I believe it is. It's got the baseline, then June and July, a limited number of focused objectives for the upcoming year are identified. Usually, they say at the max, there's five. August and September, you work the plans out, you share with the Board, et cetera. September, you launch the plans. They're ongoing. In December and January, that's when the Board would sit down with the superintendent and discuss how the objectives are going, and then June, July, to get the final for that year. I mean, what do you want the superintendent to work on the school district stuff? You know, be honest, with a year. You want a monthly evaluation?
Sorry.
How much do you, can a person do? You want a monthly evaluation, we have two Board meetings, when does he actually have time to run the district?
But again-
Okay? I'm asking you a simple question.
Okay. Terry, it's okay if I clarify?
Sure.
Just because it's a monthly evaluation, you're not tearing apart his whole evaluation. You're addressing specific issues that may come up during that year, or whatever, that you see needs immediate attention, or that, in honesty, things that he's doing good. I mean, there's an opportunity for, to have praise in there also. I mean, it's not always has to be bad. So, I mean, my meetings with my bo, I mean, back to the example, my meetings with my boss, it's not, in honesty, it's 90% good and 10% bad.
But it's a one-on-one. You're talking with a Board of nine.
Okay, but we only have one voice. We can't have nine individual voices. We are one Board. We're not allowed that one voice, individually.
I'm going to say this. If you sit down with nine Board members, and sit down every month with the superintendent, we're going to be here forever, because you've got nine different people talking. I would rather see a format of, you give them a limited number of, once we set up the evaluation process. And if you read this thing, for one thing, it tells you, if you don't have nine Board members giving any evaluation to the superintendent, it all comes down to one. I mean, we need to look at how we're going to set up the evaluations before, but this monthly thing, I just can't see, it's an overkill, and I do believe that- monthly thing, I just can't see, it's an overkill, and I do believe that it's going to impact how he runs the district. You can't have him doing everything. You've got him twice a month for the board meetings, you still got to try to run the district, and now you want to, on top of that, give him a monthly, which is going to be more time-consuming. I just don't see how, it's an overkill.
Lisa?
What is the timeframe that the board has to decide whether or not we are renewing the superintendent's contract?
You already made that decision.
We extended it or-
Right, August.
That was in August.
August of 2014.
Okay, so we don't do anything until August.
Right, so the evaluation precedes that?
Okay.
And I think we had agreed it'll be done by the end of June.
By June 30th.
That's by policy, and then you have, the board would have, unless they made a decision to not extend by August, the end of August, then the contract would be extended for another year.
Okay, now, and, and my recollection was that there was something that we needed to approve or not approve in January in regards, and what is that?
Yeah, there's, there's two different options that, that a board can, and superintendent can choose to go. If the board had chosen not to do anything in August, or if it had chosen to not re, not extend the contract in August, they could have come back in January and renewed it for two years.
Okay.
But because the board extended it for one year-
Okay.
It can't take action in January, it can take action again in August to either extend it a year or not.
Okay.
And then if it chooses not to extend it, then in January can choose to either renew or not renew.
Okay. All right. Then, in regards to this evaluation conferences, whether we like it or not, Jeff is correct. This board isn't going to move forward. We have some serious issues, and our superintendent is blessed to have numerous directors that report to him. So the directors really do a lot of the, the, his job, from what I understand, he's leading the district, and they do a lot of the work. And if, and if part of that leading means that he has to report to his superiors and take direction from them, in, in, in my world, that's the way it's supposed to be. So I will most definitely support this, as I have in the past, and I really don't understand the opposition to it. If, you know, if we do it a few months and everything's fine, you quit doing it. But to automatically say no before we even try it, I don't get it. Don't get it.
Kim?
Basically, I was going to see if Renee had, she was kind of piping in there, if you want to go with her first and then come back to me.
What I was just going to mention is that I liked what Bob had handed out about the Ohio. If you look at the information that Bob shared in the Ohio document, it's data-driven, goals, and they have conferences and a clear direction for the superintendent. I think that the wording that Jeff has chosen, evaluation, I think it kind of has to have that kind of wording in it, in order for the board to go into closed session. I once again asked Terry on a number of occasions, if we couldn't meet following the action in August, to just have a conversation with our superintendent, and we have been unable to do that. And I think it shows in the way in which the board has been working or not working. And I think if we could just sit down with our employee and have some discussions, we could all move forward. But for whatever reason, I don't know, people don't seem to want to talk, or want to have that opportunity for some dialogue. I certainly would like to look for ways for everyone to work together, and the only way you can do that is sitting down and talking eyeball to eyeball. And so I am going to support this, and I hope there is a majority of the board that does really move forward.
Kim?
And I'm going to support it, too. I mean, this, this might sound even funnier than Jeff's, but I meet with my manager and then my boss every other week. So we have a weekly meeting to say where I'm at, what I need to work on, and again, most of the time is positive. You know, you have to get the baseline set, so then you can work through it. It might only be a 15, 20 minutes, and say, how, how you doing on this, where we don't, you know, where are we going with this? The evaluation this last year was horrible. We were thrown into things. Unfortunately, most of the world remembers the negative things versus the positive things. So if we can overcome the negative things, if there is any, then we can work on it and move forward, and only deal with the positives and, and work on that. I'm going to support this. I think we need to have a discussion on it and work through it. Again, I think his intentions are, if it's going to start monthly, and then when we start getting a routine going, it won't have to be. The only thing I would not suggest is doing it after a regular board meeting, because as you can see, it's 10 o'clock, and I really do not want to get into a deep discussion at 11, 12 o'clock, when most of us have to be up at 5, 6 o'clock in the morning. I would like to see a special session, yes, even with this Christmas season, so, and soon, and soon, so.
Thank you.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
My concern with this is that this is probably the hottest topic that we have. This is what we fight about, this is what we can't stand each other over, this is what everybody bickers about all the time, is the polarization that comes over the superintendent. If we attempt this without a facilitator, is it going to turn into a mudflinging fest? Not even just at him, at each other. And that's my concern, is that's why I liked having Dale here. He doesn't know any of us, and he told off pretty much every one of us in turn. And I appreciate that there's somebody that can say, no, actually, you are out of line, or you have a good point. I think what you're asking for is a valid thing. I would like to see it happen. The only reason we moved it to January is because people said they were really busy during the Christmas season. If you want us to ask Dale if he can come in December, let's do it in December, but I'm super uncomfortable doing this without a facilitator. I just think it's going to be really ugly. And like Kim said, I don't even know the option. How are we going to do it if it's not at midnight? My head's already throbbing by midnight, and so it's either going to be a fruitless discussion or a mean discussion. I'm not overly interested in either one, so I'm willing to have more of a conversation about it, but I would like to see a facilitator.
Jeff, Evil?
What are we going to use for this evaluation? And I think, just to kind of expand on what Angel's saying, is that if we don't set the rules up front, it's exactly what's going to happen. So, you know, what are we asking? How, how does the superintendent need to prepare for his evaluation? What kind of information does he need to bring forward? What things are we going to talk, how are we going to measure his performance? Otherwise, it's basically everybody's opinion. I mean, and it, it does bother me, too, Jeff, that, that we haven't established that criteria yet. And that, I think, is absolutely, positively, the first step we need to take is to figure out what, how we're going to measure the performance.
Well, I guess we could have done that at the last meeting.
Yeah, I guess we could have, but we didn't.
We didn't.
So we didn't, because we had Dale here coming to help us get together. We all agreed that we could have some sort of meeting. I, I am not for meeting every single month to have a fac- I think I agree totally with what Angel said, because we all have very strong opinions, and I think the idea is to have someone give us a hand to say, hey, is this something that we can all do together? Whether it be every few months, in two months, and then another few months, we're going to have a new board. You know, do you want to do, do you want to set up objectives and monthly meetings in February and March, and then in April, we have an election, you know? So there, there's just some specifics that if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Let's not just say we're going to have an evaluation every month with no criteria, you know? It just doesn't make sense. Let's have a meeting to have a meeting to what? For everybody to vent and give their, their complaints? Let's make it worth something.
Attila, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I, I think the comparison to the private sector, that, the private sector here that has been made is, is apples to oranges. You, you sit down with your boss one-on-one and have those kind of conversations. You know, I'm, I'm the superintendent of the district, effectively, that, well, it says in policy, the chief executive officer. I, I have nine people who's supposed to speak with one voice. It's not, it's not a true comparison. When I was an assistant principal, I had a boss who was a principal, we would meet weekly to go over things that were happening. It was not evaluative, it was check-in, check-out, and, and had great discussions. Sometimes there was direction that came out of that, sometimes there was change in direction, but it was a, kind of an ongoing thing. This is a very different kind of situation. Number two, I would be the only employee in the district who would be treated in this fashion, which really kind of feels like it's harassment, because without, without evaluation criteria, you have a, you have a board policy that says you will evaluate the superintendent annually. Doesn't mean you can't have conversations in between those times, but there's a formal evaluation process that takes place annually. So what is the real reason for treating this employee differently than all the others? I would go back to what Angel said. It has to do with the, the issue about polarization. You know, if, if, if it's going to be truly meaningful, then there needs to be data, not hearsay, not rumors, this is what I've heard, people have called me, I mean, those have no part in this. And so I'd have some real concerns about that, and it, it does feel like harassment on a monthly basis, to meet without the superintendent, and then to meet with the superintendent to evaluate. I, I've said all along, let's have a discussion in open session among us, the board and the superintendent, about topics that you want to have discussion about. There's nothing that prevents us from doing that. And if at the end of the year, you want to have an evaluation about how things went, board policy directs that. I'm not opposed to having conversations about anything in the district that takes place between the board and the superintendent. And Lisa's absolutely correct. I'm very fortunate to have probably the best team of people I've ever worked with in my 41 years, and I would certainly like them to be a part of the conversation, because they help operate the district. And just one final comment, I offered to the board to meet privately with the entire leadership team, and with cabinet, and with individual cabinet members, to discuss my evaluation, because they're the people that I meet most frequently with, they're the ones that I deal most frequently with. The board never took me up on that offer. If you're going to reach out to people that I don't have any contact with on a daily basis, sometimes not even on a yearly basis, because it's 1,000 employees, that would seem to be pretty far-reaching in terms of getting input about the superintendent's evaluation. I'm your employee. So the board's going to do what the board's going to do, but I wanted to give my input.
Kim?
And I guess that's the, that's the bottom line, you are our employee. And in the first couple meetings, or maybe the first meeting with or without the facilitator, it is going to be, hey, we heard this, hey, we're going to do it this. You're going to hash that out, and I think as grown adults, we can put a evaluation together to see on a regular basis how we can evaluate our employee, possibly bringing in his cabinet members one at a time, and seeing a diff- we have to. I mean, I have people underneath me in my job, and there, I get evaluated by them. And I think we need to get it from different angles. We need to start someplace, so the hearsay doesn't keep building and building and building and building, and then it's gossip, and then you're going to sue, and then I'm liable. Let's get it out, and down the road, we can do it in open session. I think in the beginning, we have to do closed session, so we can get the hearsay out, find if it's the truth or not. This Ohio thing, it's not Wisconsin. We don't have Act 10 in Ohio, do we? We don't have a morale plan that sucks in Ohio. I get the baseline, but we need to do what's best for our district, and we need to get through this.
Something to help, that's all that was for.
I agree, but it's just like, we, we, we're such an individual district going through major problems that other districts around us don't. It's because of dysfunction. Where do you, where do you put that?
Jeff?
It's also about performance. I mean, it doesn't always have to be about his evaluation, but performance on certain issues, like you said, key issues that, you know what, we need to address of how things are done, or how things are not done. And it kind of keeps the ship, so to speak, in the right direction. While I can appreciate what Attila says, apples and oranges, I respectfully disagree with him. It's still an employee and employer relationship, regardless of if he is the superintendent or I'm just the claims adjuster. There's still that relationship, and still that communication's necessary. At the end of the day, again, you know what, we're all grown adults here, we're going to decide we're going to do it or not going to do it, and at the end of the day, it is what it is.
All right, there was a very long, Jeff?
Oh, I just wanted to mention that, you know, unless this is clearly defined, I'm very reluctant to, to move forward with it. I just need more information on exactly what we're going to do and how we're going to do it.
Well, I, you know, I think we should go ahead and vote, because I need to sign off, and I apologize.
No, that's fine, Renee.
Ken? I would just take issue with the fact that Attila's willing to discuss anything with us. You just talked about the staff morale plan. I've asked numerous times to have talks with the superintendent, as well as about various topics, and it just seems like this particular year, it's almost, it is almost ridiculous that the hoops that one has to jump through to try to get anything on the table to openly discuss it. So while I understand he offers it, I just haven't seen that happen, and I think it's just been a real disservice to everybody. I, I just think, I always believed that if you are able to talk to people, you'll find out that you agree on more than you disagree. And I also would like to hold someone accountable, because according to our board policy, which Terry, you sent to the whole board, you and Angel should be setting the agenda. Everyone was ready to meet last Wednesday, and I would really like to know why we weren't able to meet. Because Barb should not be sending things out that you and Angel have not approved to agree.
Very simply, the, the posting was in error.
It always happens. It seems like we never get to talk about this stuff. There's always an excuse.
Renee, excuse me, but I had the floor. We have since implemented a procedure-
Another system.
Excuse me?
Another system. You keep implementing all these systems, and we can't get anything done. That's why the board meetings last until 10:30, 11:30, 12:30, quarter to 1, quarter to 2.
Well, Renee, if you would let me kindly finish, I do believe I had the floor, and I've now been interrupted twice. We have im-
All right.
Three times. We've now implemented a procedure where the postings for notices get circulated amongst Angel, myself, they come out from Barb, they're also circulated to the superintendent and the administrative assistant.
I think that the interchange that just took place is really good example of why we do need a third-party facilitator to even move forward. I also think that Jeff's point is one that I, I would, I would say is just absolutely a necessity, which is, if, if, I, I can't walk into a meeting without, with the Board of Education, my employer, knowing that it's going to be evaluative in nature, and not know what the criteria were, what the process is, that just doesn't make any sense to me at all. It's never happened in my career. I, I just can't see how I, I would even, how I would even walk into that room, so.
Barb, there was a, a very long motion made quite some time ago, and I believe it was moved and seconded. Jeff and Renee, will you read it back, please?
It's moved and seconded to have monthly evaluation on the next closed-session agenda, December 16th, with the first one being without the superintendent.
A roll call vote, please.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Fine.
It's basically about, Renee, your rudeness towards her. I believe it's rudeness. I see your body language. She cannot. She doesn't know you were continuing your discussion, so I-
He's also a former-
Again, I have the floor right now, Terry. I have the floor, and you can see my body language.
My apology.
So I believe that you owe her an apology for doing what you just did to her. Again, I, I, just a comment, we can vote now.
And I appreciate your position. She's also a former sitting president and understands Robert's rules, and I was interrupted three times when I had the floor.
A question before we vote?
Yes.
Are we going to tell Dale we don't need him?
No.
I would say, if he can make the, if he can make the 16th, it'd be awesome to have him in our closed session, to help facilitate the board in the right direction. That'd be great. Why don't I ask that question?
Well, he's scheduled, right, for January? I can't, I just can't-
He's not scheduled yet.
We don't have a date for Jan- January yet, do we?
We have a date for-
But we have a date for him in January?
No.
What did we decide this afternoon? We just decided today.
The 20th.
Well, you can't. There's four of us in Milwaukee, isn't there? Or is it the day before we go to Milwaukee? I won't do Wednes-- is that Wednesday?
No.
It's Monday, the 20th.
Okay.
Jeff?
I'm still confused as far as what we're going to evaluate and how we're going to evaluate it. This is, it's to evaluate the superintendent, right? What are we going to evaluate him on?
It's not just the evaluation, but also the performance. I guess you're confusing the issues here. We've already evaluated him in July. We gave him that evaluation. This is a follow-up on that evaluation. We can talk about the communication plan, we can hammer that out in closed session. That's the first thing that we need to do. But secondly, if there's any performance issues, if you're, I know what you're talking about, is for next year, as far as what tools are we going to use, how we're going to move forward, is it measurable, what are those? I get that. But there are some performance issues right now that I think this board needs to deal with.
Could you read the motion again? Then I must have understood it wrong.
It was moved and seconded to have monthly evaluations on the next closed-session agenda, December 16th, with the first one being without the superintendent.
Now, that's an evaluation. I mean, that's what it says, so--
It's a performance and evaluation.
Well, I think if there are performance issues that, as you said, Jeff, I would think I would have a right to know what those performance issues are.
And you will. Once we have our first meeting to have one voice instead of nine different voices, and then you will get a list of those, as I explained, I don't know how many times in the last three months, you get a list of those, and then we have a conference with you. We give that list to you before we even have that conference, so that you can get your ducks in a row, or whatever you want to do to respond to those.
See, that--
And we have that.
And that, the logistics of this are going to work out as such. Somebody said we shouldn't do it after a regularly scheduled board meeting because they go too late. So then you're talking about having an additional two meetings per month in addition to the two. Then you're talking about giving the superintendent performance issues, and then preparing that. I'm going to go back to what Bob said. There really are only 24 hours in the day, and the number of hours clocked right now are absolutely ridiculous in terms of, in terms of the number of hours that I clock. I'm not going to have time to operate the district in the way that it should be, because I'm going to be preparing for board meetings, preparing for special board meetings, and addressing performance issues. I mean, I have to tell you, it just, it, you're going to, you're going to say, I'm not doing my job, and the reason is, is because I'm performing all these other things that you want me to do. It almost becomes silly. So if the board wants to have discussions about the direction of the district, we should have those in open session in front of the public. And if you're going to evaluate the superintendent, you ought to have some criteria and evaluative measure, even if it's on a monthly basis. And especially if it's about performance issues. If you don't have something in front of you with which to deal with, that's not fair to the employee at all.
In order to kill us being on board members, I think we really need to vote. And Attila, I don't think it's appropriate for you to be discussing this when it is a board discussion. You know--
Can I call the question?
I'd like to have us vote if we can.
I don't know--
The question?
Are you calling the question, Renee, or?
No, I'm not, because then we'd have to vote on that.
Well, the question has been called. Is there a second?
Second.
Calling the question.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to call the question and end discussion. Roll call vote, please.
This is on calling the question.
Correct.
You're calling, you are voting on calling the question. I said I didn't want to do that.
I know, someone else did. So Angel and Bob did. Bob did.
Okay, because you have to understand, I can watch you on the screen, but if I listen to the screen, it is delayed a number of minutes. So the only way I can really do this is by listening on the phone.
Right, we appreciate the hardship.
We did not, we did not know that. Thank you for sharing.
Ready?
Ready.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurick?
No.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
Four, it fails.
That was calling the question, so we're not calling--
It's two-thirds.
Oh, got it.
I'd like to amend the motion. Right? Now, I can amend the motion, right? Okay. And I would like to amend it to say that we should meet to discuss the criteria that we're using to evaluate performance. And just to discuss the criteria to use for evaluation of performance.
That has to be done in open session, just so you're aware.
Then we should, then there should be an open.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Or is it too soon?
Well, wait a minute, we need a second.
Yeah, nobody's seconded yet, so.
I'll second it.
Jeff, are you talking about a monthly evaluation criteria or an annual?
Talking about any criteria, just so that we can even have a discussion. And if there's things that are in short enough intervals where monthly makes a difference to look at it, then it might be very specific issues. But I, again, I have no idea what we're using for a yardstick. We're just saying, you know, we're going to evaluate, and I don't know how we're going to do that. But that discussion really needs to take place. That's essentially the fine hour workshop that we've been talking about.
That's why we had Dale.
So that has been, there's been a motion and a second to determine--
It's me seconding. Oh, yeah, you did.
Yes, Renee did.
Thanks, Renee.
Is there further discussion?
What's the motion again? The amended motion.
To meet to discuss the criteria used to evaluate performance in open session.
For the superintendent?
Mm-hmm.
I just basically have a comment.
Yes.
Is, I'm not quite sure why he's so reluctant to do this. When I walked into my boss's office, I want to know if I'm doing something bad, if I'm doing something good. And you kind of get them all together. I think what you're worried about, it's all going to be negative, because you know people on this board possibly don't like the way you work. It's not going to happen. I think the more we get discussion and find out all of the reasonings why you do things, and yes, it's going to start with us, it has to start with us. We are your boss. We have to say, okay, where are you at with, you do in the public eye, you know, when we have our meetings, but there's underlying things you can't say. We want to know those. I want to know them. So then I may look differently. I can't meet with you daily, weekly. I won't meet with you individually. That's not my place. They should never happen. It should be all together. I'm not quite sure, and I'm not asking you to respond, why you're reluctant with it, so.
May I respond? May I respond?
I prefer you not to.
Well, I will.
Then why did you ask?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not afraid at all. That's not the issue. The issue is an element of fairness. The issue is that this board is going to have a new superintendent at some point in the future. And I'm very concerned about who would apply for a job here, knowing that the element of fairness really wasn't front and center when you're talking about evaluating that individual. I'm not afraid at all. I have, I have nothing to hide. I've done everything I could possibly do in the best interest of this district, much of which has been disagreed with by some members of the board. That, that's really the issue. And so I'm not afraid of it. I just want to be sure that there's an element of fairness. And, and that's why I'm pushing so hard about that element of fairness.
Barb?
Don't we have a motion already on Jeff's original thing that we have to vote on yet? Or did I miss that?
We have to deal with amendment first.
There is an amendment.
We just called the question that one time.
Lisa?
This is actually, this is part of the problem. You're concerned about what the board's going to do about hiring someone later on in life. That's not your concern. It is the board's concern. And I actually don't understand why we allow as much input from you on certain things as we allow. This is a board, a board of education. You are our employee. You are not equal to us. So when we say something and you disagree with it, that's fine. But unless we ask for your input, it shouldn't be freely given.
Well, that, that's really where we part company, because--
That's fine, there we go. And if you ask, if you can respond, the answer's no.
That's where, really where we part company.
That works for me.
We all know that, Lisa.
Oh, I know.
It's worked for you for three years. We're all aware of that. But it's not just, a few people on the board agrees. It's a young girl that says he speaks way too much when he's not called upon, so.
You get it from the public all the time.
Yes.
There's been, there's been a motion and a second to amend. Why don't we take that up?
I'm not going to do that without Dale or a facilitator.
So you're abstaining, is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I said I'm not going to do it without Dale.
She can vote.
Would you like to vote?
Yes, please.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Rothman?
Yes.
So what was it, what was the vote?
Amendment, Carrie, 7-2.
The amend, the amendment was to meet in open session to determine what the evaluation criteria, I'm not using the right words, but the criterion metrics would be.
Why doesn't Barb read the motion? She's the one who's going to put it in the minutes, right, Barb? What's, what was the motion?
Amended.
The amended motion--
Correct.
Is to have monthly evaluation on the next closed-session agenda, December 16th, with the first one being without the superintendent.
Nope.
It's amended.
The amendment, they're asking the amendment, Barb.
Approved.
Right.
That was the original--
And that, that was the original motion, the amendment, then to add, and meet to discuss the criteria used to evaluate performance in open session.
And that's what we voted on.
That's what we voted on.
That would override the closed session.
No, we voted on that, now we vote on the other.
It won't override the closed--
No.
That's the First Amendment.
We can meet in open session and not meet in closed.
Yes.
And I guess, and I was hoping that we would be discussing, oh, wait a second. So explain to me, read the whole amended motion. The whole amended motion.
Okay, it was moved and seconded to have monthly evaluation on the next closed-session agenda, December 16th, with the first one being without the superintendent, and meet to discuss the criteria used to evaluate performance in open session.
Okay, that is, that was not what I intended.
I didn't think so.
But there was an amendment that was voted on, not the original motion.
Right, the amendment. But the amendment was supposed to supersede the, because you said we can't do it in closed session. I said, well, let's do it in open session. But--
Establish the criteria.
So what'll I have to do? Just withdraw my amendment?
No, it's already done, it's already done deal.
We have to vote on the whole ball of wax now.
It's already been voted on.
It's already voted on, that's right. No, the original--
Vote on the original motion now.
Right, the original motion.
The amendment--
The original motion and the amendment.
Yep, what she just read, that's what we're voting on now, right?
Right, we're voting on it. Correct, yes.
So--
That's why we need to--
That needs to be clear for everybody. I'm not sure everybody's clear on--
Barb, all right, would you read the motion that we're about to make a decision on that includes the amendment that was just approved?
It was moved and seconded to have monthly evaluation on the next closed-session agenda, December 16th, with the first one being without the superintendent, and need to discuss the criteria used to evaluate performance in open session. It shouldn't have been an amendment, it should have been another amendment.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Shively?
Yes.
Ms. Shurick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Larson?
No.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Mr. Rothman?
No.
Motion fails. Four five.
It's ridiculous.
Um, please excuse me, I need to sign off. Good night.
Thanks, Renee.
Good night, Renee.
Item six, candidate employment information, Lisa.
Yep, I believe it's important for the board--
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
But whatever.
Okay. I believe it's important that the board makes sure that minimum qualifications are met, licensing is in place, and without the board, or without the district having agreements any longer, we don't know what we're paying these people, what their benefits are. Well, for the majority, we know, because they go to the handbook. But our administrative staff, they're on individual contracts, and I just think it's really important that the board be aware when we're approving these people that we know what all we're approving. So I would like, well, I am going to make a motion that when employment information comes forward, that it includes their qualification, licensing, and the agreement or pay and/or pay that's being offered to the employees brought forward to the board.
Including benefits, or?
Correct.
Can you, can you list all of those things again?
The minimum qualifications for the position, so make sure that they meet the minimum qualifications, their licensing that's in place, then the benefits and pay that are also attached to that offer to that employee.
Only for administration?
No.
For all employees?
The, the other employees, there won't be the agreement, and they'll be using the handbook, so you won't have to list the benefits. The administration gets separate, you know, based on whatever their contract is, but yeah.
For secretarial positions, Lisa, or clerical positions, or custodial positions, or food service workers, or bus drivers, how would you suggest we indicate that licensing and qualification, I mean--
So are you recommending that it only be for licensed staff? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, is that I think that's operational. I think that you, you do have some very good points there. I think that if, my suggestion, because Keith and I have actually talked about this when the first, the topic first came up, is that we would provide the name, the F, is that we would provide the name, the F, the amount of FTE, what school or department, or wherever they were assigned, their salary, and we could provide, for example, their degree in that area. But when you get into some of these other areas, we're going to be providing, it, the compilation of information is, I mean, how do you determine when it says X preferred, X required, that, that's operational. That's us making sure that the person is qualified to serve in the capacity that we're employing the person.
Well, and I...
And in terms of administrators, be glad to attach the contract.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Okay, and their qualifications, because I know we had an issue with the food service director, and it had, the position had to be reposted because the minimum...
But that was one instance, Lisa, and I'm kind of wondering if we, if, if we're bringing a shotgun to a mosquito. That, in other words, if there was one instance out of the hundreds of people that we've employed...
Well, no, we have, we had license issues at the high school with, and I don't remember the, the specific individual where they didn't have the appropriate license. There have been other areas, and I guess I don't see any reason for us as a board not to be able to see that stuff. I mean, if you want to put down, you know, their name, their FTE, what licenses they have, so what they're, you know, able to teach, or what their administrative abilities are, along with the agreement and the pay and benefits. I mean, it's really...
We used to get that, didn't we?
We, it came and it went, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I will second that motion.
Discussion. The word trust, we've got a great administrative team. They, they do very well for the district. And I think we have to trust them that they're going to make the best decision that they're able to make for this district. I, I just don't understand, you're just like a witch hunt you're going on. It's like, you know what, we pay these people hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, give them great benefits to do a good job. Right?
Right.
Let me finish, okay? They're doing a good job. A little bit of trust is what we need, and I trust that they're going to make the best decision for the district. And it sounds like witch hunt, micromanage, whatever you want to call it, but I can't agree with you. I have to put trust in what the superintendent's doing. I have to put trust in the people that are under him, what they're doing. I mean, that's why we're paying them. If, if we got to have this thing where we have to look at everything, make all the decisions, why are we paying these people hundreds of thousands of dollars a year? Because we are not the experts in this. They are. So we have to have the trust factor and say, we trust you to make the proper decision. Thank you.
I, I agree that, and I have the form in here somewhere, the, the personnel recommendations need to be, need to be expanded. I think there's some more information we should put in here. But maybe, would it be helpful, and I'm, I'm asking the board, would it be helpful to, to have administration bring back the, the procedures and the policy that they go through in the hiring process? Now, I've participated, I was, I was asked as a board member to participate in Brian Casey's interview, one of his interviews. So, I mean, would it be helpful to bring back that process so that we all understand what it is that they do? Because it's pretty darn extensive. Would people find that helpful? Not seeing any heads nod.
That, that's assuming that we followed that process correctly, Terry.
We do, religiously.
I guess we'll talk about that in closed session.
Or not.
Well, I take...
Or not.
And again, the issue, you know, I keep, I get calls regularly about, you know, what this person's getting paid versus that, or, you know, what benefits. And, and because we no longer have those agreements, it can't, we no longer say, well, just go on the website, you know. It's, all the agreements are out there, they're all the same. And, you know, to be open and transparent to the public, I don't see any reason why we can't include at minimum what their licensing is and what the pay and benefit is.
I would absolutely agree about the pay, the benefits, the amount of FTE, the school, the name of the individual, the licensing and so on. It, again, when you get into areas where there, you're, you're not hiring somebody based on the licensing or credentials, it becomes very difficult to provide you with what you want. And I certainly don't want you to get frustrated, because it comes up at the board table, and I get frustrated, so, and, and I know that HR does. So, we want to provide you with the information that you need to make the decision. And it seems to me that the extensive process that we have, especially with teachers and with administrators, that the licensing is, you know, number one. Yeah, there was an instance where that, that wasn't a matter about the license. I think it was a matter about the wording of the posting. But that's one instance in four years of, and, and hundreds of employees. So, how about if, I mean, I'd like to make this suggestion. What if we came back at the next board meeting, if we have recommendations for employment, and we put down those things, and we won't have an administrator, but we may have teachers because of the second semester at Spash, and see if that satisfies your request? See if we can, see if we can come to that kind of an agreement. So we'll put together what we think is a package that the board, the board needs to have. And if it's not enough, then continue the conversation.
All right, so, are we going to withdraw?
Yes.
A motion and a second?
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item seven is the selection of the super task force member, and I'm not sure, is super task force what they're going to go with? Is that the name?
I don't think we've decided to call it anything, but for now.
Well, anyway, we need one board member, ex officio, non-voting, to participate in the discussion of the, of the forty-ish odd folks who were being selected out of the four task forces. They will begin, I think the fourth task force presents next Monday night, and this larger task force will probably start sometime after the holidays.
Late January, and it, it will be a commitment of, of many meetings.
And as I recall those meetings, because I participated in the first two task forces, evenings, 5:30 to 7:30, 8 o'clock, and you meet. I think in, in the two that I participated in, we probably met six times. So, we have had three people volunteer. We need, we need to choose one. Chris Scott was one, Bob Larson was one, and Angel was, was the third person that was interested.
I would also like to be included. Yeah, I didn't know we were supposed to send you anything.
It was an email.
I don't remember receiving.
All right, so we need to vote?
So now the ballots don't work.
Well, I think we can all add... Can we all agree just to, we can add LT on the, to the ballot?
And Kim also said.
I can't make it at 5:30, if that's when they need to...
Well, I'm saying that's, that's, that's when the la, the two task forces that I participated in met. Now, what, what Tom and that group are going to agree to, I, I don't know.
Are, are we able to, or anybody, are they open meetings?
Sure.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, we, we could go.
Sure.
I mean, and granted, the, the board person is not a voting member or anything like that, but we could go at any time.
Right. Once, when, when they first meet, they will set a schedule. And, yeah, that's, anybody can, can go to that.
Okay.
You want to pass them down?
Is this majority, or just whoever gets the most?
Supplement, I think it's majority. I don't know.
Why are we doing this? Let's just talk about it.
It's just who got the most?
I, I don't know. I don't know the procedure.
Yeah. Bob. Bob has three. Lisa, Angel, two each. And Chris.
Congratulations, Bob.
I'll let you know.
They were actually, they were, they were very, it was, they were a lot of fun. The interactions were, were very, very interesting, on the, the two that I participated in. I think we're down to future agenda item requests by board members. So, anything we wish, Lisa?
Um, I would actually like for our times of our meetings to be addressed, for us to discuss possibly putting a limit on the time of our meetings and if we need to, actually, that's enough, shouldn't be talking about it. And also when there's board packet changes.
Uh, help me with that one?
I'm not sure how much I'm supposed to say until it comes back the next time.
The procedure for...
Oh, no, 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 so I mean...
It needs to be descriptive.
So that I, we know what it is we're talking about.
Oh, got it, just so when, when there's changes to a board packets, once they're set out, what is the procedure? When there's changes to the packets.
Okay. Jeff?
Uh, number five, I do not know where that came from, but that is not me.
That's what I sent you on Friday, Thursday?
I never responded, I wanted that as an agenda item. I said violation of closed sessions was the item that I wanted to...
That's what I called you about? To have you approve that, that wording?
Okay, well, that's violation of closed sessions.
That's what you want the number five to change as?
Yeah.
Violations of closed sessions?
Yeah.
That's not clear enough for open meetings law. You have to be able to tell them, like, what kind of violation.
E mailing of closed session materials to non-authorized personnel.
My calendar going off.
You're beeping.
And then I'd like to, on a future item, I would like the board to look at appointing a new council for the district.
Others?
Bob.
I just want to agree with Lisa that it's a good idea to maybe have some kind of time limit on her meetings and what the procedure would be if we got to come back the following week to finish up, just sort of, exhausted at 2:00 in the morning trying to make a...
We can't really talk about it.
Just making the suggestion.
Anything else?
Can I ask a question, clarifying question? Are, um, the violations agenda item, is that to come on December the 16th along with the duties of the board president?
Again, the duties of the board president, it was never my language.
Okay, so that's taken off?
Yes. And as far as the date, I guess that's up to the discretion of board president and vice president.
Kim, did you have?
Mine was, I had to go back a little bit. I don't know if I fell asleep there for a while during the meeting dates and times and locations. Okay, did we, did we jump right over that? Because you mentioned briefly about January 20th?
For Dale.
For Dale? That's going to be the best time with four of us leaving the next day for a workshop? You know, I mean, that's...
Based on the responses we got from people, yeah. And it wasn't on this agenda, because this is...
I don't know if I'll make it, because I'll have to probably work late, so...
But the reason it was not on this agenda is we made that decision. We did, we had agenda setting for next week at 5:30 tonight, and this was printed and out last Thursday.
And I understand, I just wanted clarification on that, and, because I don't know if I'm going to make it.
What time is that scheduled for, Terry?
6:30 to 9:30.
I mean, if we want to try to see if we can push him up sooner, that would be awesome, because I think we need it sooner than later.
Well, the earliest other date was the 14th, which worked for fewer people than the 20th, which was a Tuesday. We would, we would have had our Monday night board meeting, and then the next night do a three-hour workshop. And that worked for fewer people? Where we had more that the 20th worked for. Um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
Is there a second?
Second.
Barb, quickly, roll call.
Scary.
Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Larson.
Yes.
Mr. Presley.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Shurick. Yes. Totten. Yep. Roth.
Yes.